Yeah. Okay, good afternoon. Let's get started. It's already February now. Time is moving by fast. February 7th, 2024, time is 4:02 PM. Board members in attendance, Director Art, Director Casey, Director Bankus, Nelson Jurgensen, Kerry and Mel Khan. All seven board members in attendance, joining us Superintendent Call and also several office staff members here too. And some community members are joining us as well. Melissa informed me that there could be some sound feedback. So if you can turn all your devices to mute or the lowest volume, so that way we can avoid some of that feedback that may come. Otherwise, we may be reminded of that later on. We have one major item on the agenda today. It's the Innovation Zone application. I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Call. The district is going to propose a new innovation school, Innovation Zone. With that, I'll hand it over to you Superintendent Call.
Good evening, board members and community, my staff that are here. I want to acknowledge the members of my staff who have put just a tremendous amount of time and thought into how we try and tell the story. I also want to acknowledge Merlin and Brad, who are here as representation of CSST, whom this Innovation Zone application is really framed around. This has been a long conversation since my arrival here, which is how does a district think about meeting and ever-changing needs of its population set without having to be in this binary space of operated schools versus authorized schools? The state has done a lot of work in trying to create language that creates kind of this middle ground that gets the nimbleness of what authorized schools have been able to do and at the same time get what I'll call the economies that operated schools can generate. And so Vance Brown, who is really the brainchild, is not here, but Vance and CSST will come for the non-action part of this next week. We're going to put that in the superintendent's report to put it on the front end because they have a fairly heavy and influential board that we want to be able to put in a more predictable time period. But tonight's goal is to talk about an innovation school zone mostly and then let that non-action and action item about CSST kind of come and bubble to the top of that. But some of the questions that have come when this came to the agenda was why an innovation zone? Aren't we already doing innovative things? Yes, we are doing innovative things. And but we'll show you through, first of all, the academic master plan, how we've already done work like this and how we think that this is our deliverable to the constituents that we serve. The ones that we operate for, the ones that we authorize for, and the ones who haven't found their home in either of those spaces.
So Superintendent Call, as you make the presentation, do you want the board to ask you questions?
You should ask me questions as we come to that, yes. And we will post this. Again, you know, I know it's very difficult, this challenge of change. We've been working on this up until today. Getting this message right is important because we're not even at non-action. This is work session time. Letting this be delayed and be posted tonight as it's presented preserves the ability for us to have this conversation first before we start getting who loves the idea and who hates the idea or who says they don't like a slide or two. So this is all live and as you all need to digest it, again, we're talking work session tonight for our timeline and then non-action, action on the application itself. There's an actual slide here that talks about that timeline.
So with that, board members, if you have questions as this presentation goes along, just raise your hand, get my attention or get Superintendent Call's attention. Thank you.
We've talked a lot about a portfolio strategy for our schools. The academic master plan is very clear feedback from our community. Those conversations started three-plus years ago. We again went through the World Council meetings and the feedback. There were subcommittees already starting to form on the idea of is Colorado Springs District 11 primed for innovation spaces to accelerate the academic master plan? So we're really just kind of picking up a ball that had started some years ago and fitting it into the academic master plan. This is not an exhaustive list, but certainly the inquisitive nature of our State Center shows that we need to continue to think about new ways to deliver school opportunities. For those, you know, again, we're very proud of the plus 15 that we are this year on enrollment. Woo-hoo! First time in 11 years, only third time in 30 years. But the fastest-growing population sets in our state are areas that we are not very good at. Online schooling, homeschooling. There is more demand for more school opportunities. If we want to be a district that serves all of the public, we have to continue to press the boundaries and not fall backwards into just what's worked in the past. If we do that, we'll get right back on that slippery slope of losing a third of our students over the last 20 years when the population set in the county is nearly doubled. But we think that we continue to innovate and find ways that will be the district of choice by doing that. I show this just for folks to remember. The next couple of slides come from the core slide deck of the academic master plan of when we pitched pathway schools and new school changes. We like to frame it into this is how we think about our system. These are the schools within our district right now. This is the way that we boundary them between the four cluster schools, four cluster high schools. What works and how do we make sure that we get there? We pulled this slide exactly from the IB decision for steel, making a primary year IB school to complete that first pathway. When you hear CSST, you're going to start hearing a pathway that gets completed for the district. Right? We see, we've seen through our enrollment and through our achievement that our pathway elementary schools are high-choice destination schools that are outperforming our average-quality neighborhood school. There is something about choice that motivates the buyer, and the buyer being the student or the parent. Making an active choice to go to a school has shown clear, direct correlation to investment in the experience in that school. We've seen it happen particularly in the charter sector across the state of Colorado. Some people will argue that charter schools don't outperform or underperform traditional-run schools. But what you can't deny is the passion behind the families who choose to go to those schools. They are very certain that that was the right choice for them. This is a super-important slide because it talks a lot about the completion of pathways as part of the academic master plan. We felt and we heard the feedback from our community and again, the growth and achievement and enrollment data supports that our pathway elementary schools have been a resounding success for the district. Having that spotlight experience in elementary school makes people very happy about their choice. Nicole was with me when we were at Columbia, who was learning magnetism through a play. So these kids were getting all the fundamentals of polarity and reverse polarity and what's a magnet, what's not a magnet. They were putting it into a play because Columbia is an arts-plus-integration school. So there's no loss of the standard that was delivered in science, but doing it in a way that most of our science teachers or our elementary core teachers are not going to deliver that. And that works at Columbia. I promise you, that's not how they're doing polarity at McCullough or Bristol as STEM schools. We're servicing the needs of the families that choose our schools based upon these different pathways. So the takeaway here is there are limited resources. Everyone knows there's limited resources. We can't be all those things all the time to every one of our families. So we choose to build a system that says we have a spotlight at elementary school that starts to diffuse into a floodlight at middle school. Because we have 30-plus elementary schools, which means we can say two STEM, two arts, language and experiential, but we only have nine middle schools. And then we only have four comprehensive high schools. So we're never going to get to a place that says Mendelsburg High School is the STEM high school and it services a quarter of our kids and the art school is going to be Opmer High School and force families into those choices. Because our choice population set is actually only about 25% of our families. So by the time you get to high school, you really get to a comprehensive experience with, you can see the laser light that comes in there, some level of specificity that may or may not work for a family. I don't know if folks remember when Coronado came forward last year for their spotlight. They had a delightful young woman that was really into environmental issues. And I, gosh, her name escapes me. But she's literally part of a Parks and Rec internship and partnership that's delivered through Coronado High School. That makes sense that she would have gone to Halbert and then found a middle school where she could expand that but get more things that happened in middle school and then land at a high school where she could get basketball, volleyball, girls' field hockey, AP this, all these other things. But an internship with Parks and Rec because it was connected to our outdoor ed program at Halbert. So it can be confusing for folks to see the high school unidirectional, which means I got to service thousands of kids in four comprehensive high schools, but making sure we get specificity. So I show that as a frame. I've got L. McDan, Laura Lee. Say your name for everybody for me.
Laurie Lee.
Laura Lee. Laura Lee told me that she goes by L. because everybody calls her Lauralee. And I said, well, I've been calling you the wrong name the entire time that I've been here. So Lauralee helps lead our visual and performing arts work. This is a great example of how our academic master plan has found a way to get unidirectional and then laser-focused. Columbia Martinez are doing great work at Arts Plus Integration. In year one, last year was phase zero year that we saw strong enrollment. We were seeing strong performance. Again, I gave you an example of magnetism through a play. If 25 kids start in one of those first-grade classrooms, how do they matriculate through the system? Now Coronado can be exchanged here with the marching band that happens at Doherty. We have great visual and performing arts programs that exist in our comprehensive high schools. We know that. But we have some kids that really want an immersive experience in visual and performing arts. You're going to love it. I was at Doherty this morning. I went to the choir director, Todd. I went to Ryan Reed, the theater director. I went back there. They're doing great work there. But you're still, still a Spartan before you are in the visual and performing arts. Families want a very unique niche experience. We've done that for our visual and performing arts. Where we haven't done that yet is in science and technology. We have STEM programming at McCullough. We have STEM programming at Bristol. What we do, and we're working on our middle schools right now, and we have strong STEM things that happen in our high schools. I say it all the time, we're building an airplane at Mitchell High School. We have an award-winning robotics experience at Coronado. But what we don't have is a standalone school of science and technology. Now, there are other aspects to this as we get to the innovation zone of how do we create that in the most disruptive and least costly way? So I'll use one of the centerpieces that you'll hear from CSST next week a little bit is the UCCS cybersecurity lab. Our solution at a high school is our teachers find, they do incredible jobs in resourcing things. They'll find a grant, they'll get some five-year-old computers, they'll put them together in their garage over the weekend, they'll bring them in on a media cart and they're going to say, here's what we're going to do for a cybersecurity club at Mendelsburg High School. Our kids deserve access to the incredible facilities that exist within our local economy. The UCCS cybersecurity lab is dying for high school students to find a way to get access to that. But that takes a different type of school because our comprehensive schools aren't built that way. They aren't built for kids to be able to figure out how do they start getting graduation credits through a cybersecurity lab setting? They're built to say, here's how you get your credits and now you can go play in your robotics or your cybersecurity or you could go put rivets in an airplane down at Mitchell. This idea of an innovation school in a zone to do this is seeking to create a through line all the way from us teaching kids to what the economy is demanding in the highest-needs sector of our city. So we have other slides that I'll get to those numbers when we get there. So if I take this back here through STEM, and I kind of talked through it already. McCullough and Bristol, what are we going to do at middle school? How do we deliver that same example that I gave you here of Coronado and SEVA for choice for families by doing the same thing at high school? We already do it at the comprehensive level. We have strong STEM programming. But we don't have hyper-specific niche programming that literally is going to put a rocket in the front of it. Vance's promise was he's going to get a rocket and he's going to put it out in front of the building. Right? He wants a giant rocket that says, there's a school of science and technology. That's bold and that's audacious. If I come to the board and say I need $200,000 for a rocket, you're going to tell me I'm crazy.
Can you go back to that slide? So another one before that one, I'm sorry. So 25 students in first grade and only five of those students carry it through our pathways. And so is it the middle school that's missing? Is that what we're talking about here?
So we are in middle school redesign. This is designed right now to start as a secondary school. We do believe that this school could be a sixth through 12. The primary focus right now is let's start at the ninth and 10th grade level and then decide to build forward and back at the same time. I think that is dependent upon what we're able to do at the middle school level. We're going through the middle school redesign right now and for all intents and purposes, we're a four-pathway district. We have experiential, which would be Montessori or outdoor education or project-based learning. We have language, dual-language at Rogers. We have STEM and we have arts. So if we were to take our nine middle schools and say two STEM, two arts, two experiential and two language, you'd get eight out of nine, which means you could easily distribute that. But how we do that and who thinks that they want which one is what's happening in the design thinking right now. We don't want to tell schools what to do. We want our schools and their community to say what they want to be and how they can be supportive of that. So yes, there's a middle school component of that. But really, the purpose of these series of slides is we don't expect all the kids at Halbert to end up in Parks and Rec partnerships when they're 17 years old. I took piano lessons when I was in the fourth and fifth grade and I couldn't carry a note now if you tied it to my back. I was certainly better for that piano lesson, but my interests changed over time. And generally, we think that the pathway schools are best served by more focus at elementary and diffusion over time with niche opportunities for kids that are really into it. So I called them, what I call them, geeks the other day. I said, we need a geek school. We need a school for the kids that literally everything you say to them, they turn into a computer code. Right? That's not every kid. I think every kid should be familiar with computer codes. But I don't want to say Coronado. I'm sorry, I don't want to call our schools out because then people get identified by, they think I'm thinking about them. I don't want Mendelsburg High School to have to be that every kid that goes there is about coding. I want to create that choice. And the SEVA model shows that a couple of hundred kids is about all a district can sustain in any one of these individual areas. We went through a conversation last year with C.L.A. on expanding our language conversation. And because no deals are easy to get done, we couldn't get there. We couldn't get there. But we have to answer the same thing on language as well. If you're, and I appreciate the board bringing dollars to bear that matches international travel to kids that are invested in language. That is a niche. That's a niche. If you're in a third-year language, we want to send you away to a country for you to study that for 10 days. That's not every kid that goes to high school goes to a country for 10 days. That's not sustainable. It doesn't match the demand. Okay, I want to get moving through here. This was the one we modified today. We just really thought a lot about language. Right now, the system is fairly polarized. There are operated schools of which I have direct responsibility and there are authorized schools. And I think even the board is understanding the difference between being a governance model of schools that it operates and then being a governance model of schools that it authorizes. It's a different level of responsibility. Each one of them is a successful choice for families. This has been a hard part in public education because either circle can argue very strongly on why either circle isn't good for the system. But I like for us to sit in the space. You hear me say we give public education back to the public. Families want choices. Families don't want to be told that we don't like their governance model on whichever side of that we sit on. And I don't mean we, just as the senior governance team. I mean anybody in here. And so again, our district has presented itself as a district of change and a district that has found the way for these things to work well for other families. Nikki Myers came to every principal's meeting as the principal for Academy ACL. Roosevelt has come to a bunch. We've got great relationships in our alt-ed settings between Eastlake and what's happening out at Tesla and Bijou and the same thing with community prep. We have blurred those lines as a district. And we think that we can further blur them by bringing these two circles closer together. So we were very specific to not say traditional versus charter because we are very innovative already. And I saw that as a question. Aren't we being innovative? We are. But the fastest way is to take advantage of the state's law that says, what do you need removal from in order to get better outcomes for families as fast as you possibly can? Remember, the highest-growing population set in the state of Colorado right now? Homeschooling. And that's not because certain religious sects are growing at a faster rate. It's because parents are saying what's being offered isn't meeting their need. So we think that this space could be very advantageous for us. I'm going to let Nicole go over the laws because that's why I have Nicole over my team.
So the Innovation Schools Act was originally passed in 2008. We took the next few slides directly from CDE because you'll be able to find this language in the Office of Choice at CDE as well if you want to go take a deeper dive. Just highlighted specific pieces of it. The Innovation Schools Act covers two parts. It covers innovation schools, which are different than innovation school zones. In 2022, June of 2022, the Innovation School Zones Act allowed for alternative governance. So that's when that piece came in. But previously, it was to fill that space that the superintendent just talked about between the red and the blue here. How can we allow schools that are operated in district to have some of the same flexibilities that charters have in order to be nimble and do things that we need to do that sometimes when we're subject to the same policies, it's harder to make that happen in a nimble way and in a speedy way? So you can see, that's why we're bringing this proposal forward. Why seek innovation status? This is from the same site there as well. It cites some work up in Denver that I know Scott can, or Dr. Mendelsburg can speak to. Sorry.
Mendelsburg High School.
Okay, Mendelsburg High can speak to more readily. Again, just giving more of the why, but really it's to allow those flexibilities. I kind of like to think of that as an R&amp;D wing. When you're out in industry, you have research and development happening really regularly in the organization to learn from that. When you can hyper-focus on the research and development pieces like you can in a school like this, lessons learned come quicker and we can move just in a much more nimble kind of way. Want to add anything to that?
No, I'll wait. Thanks.
Yeah. And then this piece just goes into the Innovation School Zone component that we talked about that came forward in June of 2022, which allows for that alternative governance models. Why apply for innovation waiver status? This is taken, as the superintendent said, when we started the academic master plan work back in 2020, there was already a committee working on that at that time about innovation as well. Because sometimes when you start DLI programming or STEM programming, you start to live in a space where you say, oh, the current calendar or schedules that I'm confined to aren't meeting the needs of my school anymore. Or there's waivers on curriculum resources that you might need to use in a school like that that you don't get unless you have innovation status. There's also waivers on staffing or budget use within innovation. So this piece is the same information from the state but put in a way that helped our schools start to understand. If I get to that place where the things I'm trying to execute on, I can't, what are some other options that I could explore? One of those is innovation status as a school or as a zone. A zone is typically made up of a group of schools, but there is precedence up in Jeffco. There is a single school that sits in an innovation zone by itself. It's a Montessori model that does that.
This is just a summary slide of a lot of the laws that were listed there. I think that the important piece here is this idea of economy. I think, well, this will be a gall belief statement. I have been pro-high quality wherever I have been. I worked in Detroit where we were state takeover. We had charter schools in our portfolio. They were a small segment of that. I went to Oakland where we were in, when I was in Detroit, local universities had authorization rights in the state of Michigan. So it wasn't just districts and/or CDE, state level. Any university could authorize a charter school because of their commitment to higher education by being able to provide that funnel. My time in Oakland, we were an authorizer, much like we are here in District 11. And as the chief of staff to the superintendent, we were constantly correcting our team to say we were not 34,000 kids, we were 42,000 kids. The system wants it to be 34,000 kids because the hallway feels that it is an operator not having a responsibility as an authorizer. We have increased the enrollment of this district by 1,300 kids between last year and then coming next year on bringing in a portfolio strategy. Some people will say that's not an enrollment increase because it's just a different school. Those are tax-paying members of our community. The choice that they made for the school is not right and it's not wrong. It's just their choice. And the fact that it falls within the confines of what the state allows for is what our collective responsibility is to support. We're not here to be judge and jury on individual choices. And if I go back to that first slide with all the different school types, we should actually be asking the administration to find ways to be more expansive to support more of what the community is asking for. I want to talk a little bit about the timeline. We need a resolution from the school board to put in an application to the state. The state as a zone will take the waivers and review them en masse and either approve or deny. That's a little bit different than how charters can be authorized through CSI. But the first step is we need local control because that's the gift of America, is local control at the education level to get to the state for them to say, do we or do we not approve that? So where we are today is introducing the idea to then go from non-action to action on a resolution on the application that was posted. And I know that there are some follow-on questions from that. And then this falls to the timeline. These are the tabs that we introduced last week at the retreat. We have the overall timeline. This was a sub-tab. We're striving to be able to create an opportunity for at least a two-grade launch by next school year. That's why we are here today. Now, I know that we move fast under my administration, but because the click of life in education is yearly, that's why we're here. Because if we wait another 60 days, because the state gets 60 days to review it, they said they can get it back in 30 days, we have to be able to have the spring and the summer to be able to bring that type of plan to life. Right? And so I know that there's this, oh, you're moving too fast, you're moving too fast. The alternative is a whole nother year. And when I measure years, I measure years in the quality of opportunity that exists for a student. So I tell the story about when I was in DC. If you don't know who Kaia Henderson is, please look her up. Probably one of the strongest superintendents the country's ever seen. Kaia announced her retirement, which means nothing new happened that year. The next year, the interim was there when there was a national search. Nothing new happened that year. Then my boss, the chancellor, was hired. His honeymoon, nothing new happened that year. He resigned and they went to an interim to do another national search. Nothing new happened that year. And then they settled on Louis Farabee, who had been the superintendent from Indiana, those public schools. So it took five years for DC public schools to do the next thing. And from an adult perspective, that was perfect timing because we were engaging and we did a national hired superintendent search and we had all kinds of meetings, which meant if you were in the seventh grade in DCPS when Kaia Henderson, who again is probably the strongest superintendent the country's seen the last 20 years, when she announced her retirement, nothing When she announced her retirement, nothing new happened for you until you graduated. Because timing is always hard and change is hard. This isn't change, this is opportunity. The last thing I wanna talk about is the other piece of this why. I got here in uh July of twenty twenty-two. One of the first places I went, I was uh um. Uh humbly invited to be a guest speaker at the Pike Point, Pike's Peak Workforce Development Center. So I drove up there at the end of Garden of the Gods and it just keeps going. I was like, where is this? Where, I saw Space Foundation thing, I was super excited. I go in there and the, the SEL opener was, uh, who here is having trouble hiring? And so at the Pike's Peak Workforce Development Center, you have everybody from UC Health, a giant conglomerate. To mom and pop contractors and small technology firms. Everybody raises their hand. We have trouble hiring. We have a third of our kids that aren't, have no plans to go into industry. Right there, CDE debt, thirty-seven percent of our D eleven students are matriculating, you can see the numbers. We're the lowest in the area, I guess D forty-nine is just a little bit lower. You heard Valerie come and say fifteen percent of our kids have no plan whatsoever. So I said, I'm gonna lean in on workforce development. So if you haven't met Jana, last name, uh, it's um. I'll get it, what's that?
Reed Meyer.
Reed, Reed, Reed.
Kirk Meyer.
See?
I think it's Kirk Meyer.
Reed Kirk Meyer, thank you. She was hired in to, uh, for the Economic Development Chamber downtown. And so we started talking and saying, how do we connect our product to your need? And she says, the number one goal of the city is to be the tech part of not just Colorado Springs. And not just west of the Mississippi, but in the United States. We believe we have the infrastructure, we have the federal support between the Army, the Navy, Space Force now being here. She thinks, she says that she thinks her, the previous mayor and the current mayor, the future of this city is technology. How do we develop the skills of technology? Now, I had a whole series of other slides for this, but I just wanna talk about it instead. The disruption that needs to happen is, is we don't connect the product of high school to what it is that industry says that it needs. And what we wanna do in this innovation zone is create a tripartite, tripartite relationship. Between the local economy, UCCS, and District eleven. How do we finally bring higher ed to the table through, at one of several ways? Their cybersecurity space and have a board, cuz that happens to share space with the National Cyber Center, NCC. Which has got the Boeings and the Lockheed Martins and all these people that know what are the skillsets that are needed. We keep having a passive experience that gives our kids a diploma and says, you did it. And then they go face this world where they're not ready to get there. So from Jana's perspective, the number one way that we're filling our high-tech jobs. Is telling people that the cost of living is less in Colorado Springs than it is in Denver. So we're transporting people down and moving people in from out of state to come take our high-tech jobs. Instead of making a through line that says, why don't we have a school that brings all these resources to bear? Now, it doesn't mean that we can't develop technology-minded kids in operated schools. But I'm telling you right now that when I come to you with that ticket. To just recreate a segment of the cybersecurity lab at North Nevada that UCCS has built. You, your mouths will hit the floor. So the other, the, I just believe in like confluence of time. I, I almost got the job at West Maricopa County, Arizona. I was the number two, but they said, oh, we didn't really think that you wanted to stay in Arizona. What, 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 what Phoenix did was they took their high-end job workforce development CTE. And they pulled it out of the district. And they passed a bond, they taxed their people. That says there are six schools across the west side of Phoenix that do high-end stuff. Like aircraft avionics, like windmill blade remanufacturing. Like uh, uh, a lot of the things that we can do here, maybe at like Pike's Peak State College. Um, uh, what do you call ra- uh, uh, a radiologist technician? They do those things because the comprehensive high school can't afford to do them. The conflict of interest is, how do I build cybersecurity inside of Mendelsburg High School? I just can't do it. The cost is too expensive, so why not tap in to the resource that happens? So Jana and I and Vance, because the three of us are crazy if you get us together. We believe that creating this, and this is why it's a zone, creates an avenue then for other sectors to see the same thing. Why aren't all the future med techs and nurses in our community? Coming from our high schools and getting their training onsite in the local uh hospitals? There's no way we're gonna build a phlebotomy lab, we're not doing it. You know how hard it is for our kids, and I'm the biggest proponent of Pike's Peak State College? You know how hard it is for a kid in our high school to get to Centennial or Rampart Campus? If they don't own their own car? It's a pipe train. So instead of saying, well, let's get more buses that go to Rampart. Why aren't we doing all our medical training inside the hospitals? Why aren't we doing sp- schools of cyber and uh, uh, science and technology? Inside the facilities that already exist? Especially when UCCS wants to be a partner in that relationship. So let's create a school that is a partnership between the front end, which is us pre-K to fourteen. The local economy, which is what CSST has been able to drive into this board. And higher ed that's gotta help fill the gap in between the two of it. So for us, it's a one-of-a-kind, first-ever design. That instead of everybody pointing at it, cuz when we do this, right, when I do that, there's three pointing back at me, it's not helpful. We got kids that don't have a pathway to the middle class. And we have untapped resources and really creative ideas. And now is the perfect time for this district to take a leap into it that says. Let's recreate a model, or let's create a model that no one else has created before. I'm gonna pause there. That was my last slide, okay.
So thank you both. Um, you had an opportunity to listen to what Superintendent Gall had to present. There is also an extensive application package itself on boot docs. Hopefully you had the opportunity to review that over the weekend. Um, so we open it up for questions and comments and thoughts and discussions. All the good things because this is kind of a new uh subject matter that we haven't uh delved into in the past. So with that, who wants to go first?
Dr. Jorgensen.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. I mean, my head was nodding the whole time. I, I think this is very innovative, no pun intended. Um, but just to, to say, wow, you know, we have a workforce demand. We have data that shows our kids, some of them don't have any insight into where they wanna go. So they just, you know, in my opinion, as a financial advisor, rack up student loan debt, try to figure out what they wanna do. And you know, they cripple themselves into their adult years. So if we have students that have the inkling that have had the experience. Uh, by matriculating through the pre-K to fourteen system in D eleven to be able to have this option to go, this is what I wanna do, I'm good at it. And we give them the pathway into workforce and higher ed. Um, you know, through this zone where we're not taking on the full brunt cost of a charter, of our own facility use. Um, which is what it sounds like, maybe you can speak to that. Uh, just, you know, we're, we're limiting our, our financial impact by working this niche collaboration. Is that what I understood it to be?
Yep, yep, we, we, it's um, it is certainly a, an economy. As compared to the normal route that ideas like this come up. Which is, CSST opens as a charter. And then that becomes a draw away from some of the kids that we already have. Now, they're all still our kids, we've talked about that.
Right.
But this idea of innovation allows for a little more fluidity and economy across. Um, and really creates a space where schools can see this as a win and not as a loss.
So would we consider having students from Coronado, Palmer, Doherty, Mitchell? Come over in the block schedule to attend this program at the building that you mentioned or have you thought that far enough?
We believe that there's a, a, a very large opportunity for this to be advantageous to current families as well as new families. We're even in advanced conversations that says, could we create a school that's a destination? That is um, um, agnostic to where you come from? Which is if you live in D two and you wanna come to this school. We're so committed to what we think it can do for a student and to the future, that you get to keep your kid. You just gotta pay their way to the school. But we're not, I, I'm not trying to out-enroll somebody. I'm trying to create a destination that we think we have the right confluence of leaders that can deliver on. That of course would have to be an MOU with associating um districts. But you know, as an example, I always use P-Tech High. Uh, which is in a building that sits on the border of D eleven and D forty-nine. It's an incredible school that's getting skills trade training for kids. But it's a D forty-nine school, so the way the rules are currently written. Is that if I have a kid that lives over by Doherty or Mitchell that can easily get there. And I think it's a great opportunity for him, and I say, you should go there, we lose the kid.
Right.
Right? And we're in this weird space of enrollment matters cuz it drives revenue. We think that by creating this innovative space and using this idea of kind of this triangulated partnership. That we can do it in a way where it can be an advantage to not just District eleven families. But all of families that can uh find a way to get there.
That would appreciate this niche in programming. Yeah, that's me. I'll probably have more questions later, but I like that so far.
Okay. He directs, not me.
Back to Heffley.
Um, I'm, I, I'm, I'm a little confused. Is this, are you talking about a school within a school or are you talking about transporting kids to UCCS?
Yeah. Um, I, I think the open end of that question right now is because facilities are always very difficult to find and they're expensive. I think we start at a school within a school and then we watch the demand signal. To see if that school within a school then becomes a standalone facility. I think in a perfect world, we would have just said, hey, UCCS, can you renovate the backspace of the cybersecurity lab? And that's not a, an option. But we need to get the application approved for us to then shop and find what's the right way to grow a new school. So I think it could end either way. Uh, I'll speak for Vance. You know, Vance's vision is a standalone building that, you know, draws kids from all over the front range to be able to get there. Um, I think, you know, Siva, if they were here right now would say, you know, it's hard to maintain a school with three hundred kids, is that right?
Yes.
Yep, it's hard to maintain a, a, a school with three hundred kids. So I think that's up for discussion, what's that?
No, I was just going to say, if he wants to put a rocket in front of a school, he needs his own building, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's, yeah, no jokes, sorry. Okay.
Back to Heffley, are you?
I'm good.
Okay.
So, bye.
Back to.
So I, I sent, uh, like, there was a game, almost twenty questions. And certainly, um, my, uh, to share with the rest of the board, my overarching question is why we need this? And Superintendent has certainly addressed some of his um inspiration and expectations. To me, the high achievement, the field work, the goals. Um, that's all something I want for each of our kids in our schools. And to Director Jorgensen's point, to me. If, if they want us over at cybersecurity lab, well, let's find the busing to make it work rather than reinvent the wheel. And have to create a whole new system and/or a program within one of our schools. That doesn't take a whole new system and an alternate to governance system, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so on top, let me just run down the questions so the board knows where I was coming from, um, since I didn't copy them.
Do you want to go one by one or how do you want?
No, I'm just gonna, I, let me read them out and then we can do one by one so they understand the extent of it. And what I was hoping we would see today that we don't have yet. And some of this, in my understanding, is required in an application from, for innovation zones. Specifically like a budget and we don't have that. So unless we have it next week, I, like, we don't have a proper application in my mind. Um, and there was a reference to um attachments or appendix, appendices and attachments. And we didn't see those, so maybe they exist and maybe they don't, I don't know. Um, so I was curious about shared administration, to what extent it sounded like there would be. Um, I would prefer to have plans to address special education and English language learner needs. Um, I'm curious about whether just any student can opt in, is there a lottery system? Transportation expectations is, because that's pretty significant. If we are providing the busing to a school or not. You know, is it, is it a district school or is it not a district school? Does it, what rights does it have? And I understand some of that might be a memo, memorandum of understanding. Um, expected impact on our existing high schools, since we already have three that are considered underutilized. And I feel like it would be pulling students out from those schools. And understandably, because if it's a great program, kids are gonna wanna go there. Again, I wish it were a great program in one of our schools happening. Um, so curious if we are about the financial impact on D eleven, whether we're sharing MLO funds. The indirect impact on our current CTE classes and work-based learning and mentorships. The indirect impact on donations and resources to our traditional schools. Is the D eleven promise relevant for students graduating from the school? Is there a conflict of interest with Superintendent on the CSST board if that is truly official? I think it is with you as our one employee. Um, again, the budget, bylaws for the nonprofit. And knowing how that word would add to itself, um, because people move on. We should expect a calendar as part of an application. And I noticed on one of the slides, this was appropriate and appreciated, that there would be DAC feedback. But I'm wondering if they know that yet. Um, and in the application, it mentioned, as you did. That world cafes have been held and that feedback was had over the course of several years as we worked out our academic master plan. And I appreciate that, but it wasn't necessarily for this school. Um, we don't have family feedback that this is something that people would want. So I think we just have to keep that in the back of our mind. Um, there are other things. Uh, I'm just curious, what specifically is impeding us as a district? To make this happen in one of our own schools? So I'll be curious about that too. And that's just the ones, the ones I sent. Um, one other thing about graduation, will they meet our graduation requirements? I didn't see health class in, as an example of the curriculum. Um, and maybe that wasn't complete and I understand that that might be the case. So those were some of my questions and you can see why it could take us the next couple of hours.
Well, your, two of your questions um come to mind that I think your clarification and I would like to address both of those. Um, I think it was already addressed to say, to create these programs within our existing facilities. Far exceeds our, uh, far exceeds my willingness to expend. Um, funds to create the environment at the level at which we're talking. So if we're gonna send kids to UCCS for specific career fields and phlebotomy was one that was mentioned. We can't create that for ourselves. Um, there was a time at Saban when they um sent middle school kids over to whatever hospital for the anatomy class. Um, and that was great. But there was no pathway to go farther than that for those kids who really found this of being interesting. So I think your question, and I think it's a, a good one, is, um. And I think it was addressed and that was to say that we can't replicate what's already out there. And having experience with kids who have actually gone to businesses and being accepted as kids who were really interested. They came away with a much better experience than going to a school within a school. It's a different experience, not that it's bad, it's just different. Um, and I think that was addressed, I think the offsite, offsite would work out well. The other one that you brought up that I had not considered and that was um the separate boards. And um, would you serve on both? Would you, would you also serve on their board or is that a separate board? I don't know.
I'm certainly happy for a legal review. Uh, I don't think the idea is contingent upon my service on the board.
Yeah.
Um, Vance has invited me to be a part of the planning for this school. Because he hears this vision of how I believe the future of education can better serve kids. Through an existing infrastructure instead of this constant desire to replicate. And we water it down every time we replicate it. Uh, but I don't think it's contingent upon me there. Um, I would love a legal review of that. As far as alternative governance goes, that happens for every one of our charter schools as they currently exist. They have their own board. You authorize them through the contractual relationship that you have, but their board makes their decisions. If they decide to be a Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday school and can meet the instructional hours and or get a waiver for that, that's their decision. And so this premise is, is that there would be an alternative governance to be able to be disruptive. It is very. It is very hard to change yourself when you're inside of yourself. And so it doesn't mean there's anything wrong, it just, I really appreciated the R and D language. In order to continue to press the boundaries of how do we deliver for, I, I mean, like, if we just look at the data on the right, we're not delivering. Now, we can wait until we're blue in the face and point fingers on it's this reason, or it's that reason, and it's this policy that we need to change. We are so underserving what is the need for one, our students to match the workforce, and then just a myriad of other things. I, I just feel a moral obligation to, the term that we would use in the military, is to press the envelope. You get the maximum amount of performance out of the airplane by bringing it closer and closer to the edge of where it is that you can operate. And the gift of the innovation is it's small and it's contained. If we were to come out with an initiative like this that says, I mean, last year we tried just to change graduation requirements and say that kids don't have to take chemistry and biology, that they can do that through an experiential way down at the river behind, the stream behind Coronado, and that, you know, was collapsed upon itself. So to really press the system to deliver and be on the cutting edge, to be the Cherry Creek Innovation Center of El Paso County, don't rebuild the Cherry Creek Innovation Center. Just use the things that are already in the economy. The ci, the city is interested in replicating the Cherry Creek Innovation Center, which is just a giant new high school that's gonna be constrained by all the same things that we're constrained about. When I was in DC, our highest performing school was appropriately named School Without Walls. That was the name of the high schools. And it literally did everything that it could to not be within the building. They had a building, but it was a retrofitted middle school that didn't look like a destination high school. And now, of course, we had advantage of living in Washington DC. These kids were taking, you know, their, their, um, AP history class in the Smithsonian, uh, museum all day. Like, that's an experience. This is the type of experiential space that we believe that we can build, particularly with that third partner of UCCS having that be a core curriculum that they're trying to really to develop to fulfill an area need, so this.
So.
So can I just hit on that a little bit? Cause I think you had brought up the shared governance, governance piece and to, to what the superintendent was saying. You know, the bulk of my career has been trying to break down these barriers between high, K twelve and higher ed. It is always K twelve going to higher ed going, these are challenges that our kids have. If you look at those numbers as egregious as they are, you go to the next level and see about four-year graduation rates or even five-year or six-year graduation rates. It's bad for everybody. And so, and, and so, and now those people who are going to college, who aren't graduating with a degree and getting into the, they are drawing from the tax base. And so we're, we're perpetuating a myth. So when you get industry folks, and you guys have seen the board of directors there, I mean, legitimate folks, but this is the first time between what Pike's Peak did for us last year on the promise and what UCCS is doing part of this. I've been doing this a long time, I've never seen this kind of buy-in. And what it does is, you can look at some of the original things in this thing that it says we're gonna do. But it breaks down a whole other list of barriers about shared data and things like that, so that we're presenting as a, as a unit, as opposed to here's K twelve, D eleven versus the others.
And, and we'll, uh, I'll, we'll take those lists, I'll bucket them, cause a lot of them are budgetary, and we'll supply written answers. Um, we'll have that by, uh, close of business Monday, is that enough? I know you all like information, do you want to post the answers to those questions? How do you wanna do that?
Well, those are the questions that Dr. Gratt asked, so.
And part of them should be part of the application itself, in, in my opinion. I mean, especially if somebody's gonna go to the state board and they say, well, you know, according to the CRS statute, you're supposed to have the following, and you're missing things, it doesn't, it's not gonna look good.
Well, we, we've been working with the state and they've seen what we have, and they haven't given us that feedback, but we're not trying to withhold information. A lot of that information is what comes in the relationship that's developed thereafter. Many of the questions that you asked are very similar to questions that came in our transfer applications for JICA and for Thomas McLaren, all of which were contractually worked out then, once the application was accepted for us to then go to contract. But generally speaking, it would follow very similar relationships of which we've had through other alternative governance models.
Another piece of the conversation I would like to have in this group, um, you had mentioned, your questions were great, thank you. Um, is the impact it will have on our high schools. And so, um, I don't know what the anticipated enrollment or interest would be from, uh, students who would wanna participate in, in this, uh, alternative opportunity. And what would that mean? We, I think we've demonstrated up to this point that we're not interested in closing schools. So if it would further, uh, negatively impact high schools, it may impact, yeah, I'm, I'm just throwing this out, cause I don't know, I'm, that's why I wanna talk about it. Uh, it may negatively impact the teaching staff, meaning fewer class, uh, fewer teachers because there'd be fewer students. Um, but it certainly would, based on our past performance as a, as a board, would not mean that we would be closing any schools. So what other else, um, should we consider when we're thinking about, um, high schools losing?
Yeah, we, we don't see it as a loss from the high school perspective. If we go back, we don't have the slide, but our original demographer review says that we're leaving at least thirty-five hundred kids on the table because we don't offer these type of advanced programs.
You say leave them on the table, are you saying that we already have them?
Uh, no, they leave us.
That's what, that's what I'm saying.
They go other places, so, yes, I do think that some kids from our high schools will find this attractive. But I also think, and I think the numbers have borne out to show this, that in both JICA and Thomas McLaren, we actually, and not just recapturing D eleven kids, we brought in cross-boundary kids for this. We think that this idea, sit, remember, we're the heart of the city, we're the most centralized district in the city. We build this and they come. Now, will that mean that some kids that are on the robotics team or that are building an airplane at Mitchell might be more interested in this? They might be. But they're gonna be interested in this because if we don't do it, CSST is gonna go do this somewhere else. So this idea of a good idea shouldn't happen because it's a risk to a mediocre experience. We, we have to be upping our game, this is upping the game.
That's, I don't think that's the alternative, I think we need to be prepared to, uh, understand and put in place either the dialogue, the narrative, or a, um, a support that should high schools, um, experience a lower total enrollment, that we anticipated that, and here's the, here's what we think about that. And again, it's not about closing schools, uh, and I think that's where, um, some people may jump. And I think it's important for us to say that we've looked at that, considered that, and, um, at this board and at this time, we're not interested in closing schools. Well, we'll continue to provide the full range of, um, opportunity at our comprehensive high schools. This is for children who, students who have a specific want and a specific interest in.
Okay, Philip, your, your question on staff reminded me, I forgot to mention that question, which I had also forwarded. Um, the teachers, my, my question would be, are, will teachers, there's a waiver in there about staff. And I understand that, you know, you have often commented on the need for teachers. We know that, well, how to, how to explain. There might be interest in bringing in people who do not have teaching degrees because not everybody has a rocket scientist, you know, designation, for example. And since this is a school of technology and with aerospace interests, that might be expected. But I think our community expects the teachers in front of them to have licensure. And, and when I talk to some members of the community, they say, well, yes. Um, and maybe I'm speaking to different people than you are, Director Nelson. But my question is, will the teachers at the school be certified? Would they be, if they, if they are hired without a license, would they be asked to work toward a license? Um, the importance of having some teaching skills, some classroom management, management skills, child psychology, all of that, I mean, teachers are professionals. And I've run into a few, um, college professors on my own who could not teach, PhDs, and they cannot teach. And, you know, they're, at least they had teaching assistants in college who could step up and, and reteach a lesson when the professor even got it wrong. Um, so I, I'm always skeptical of people thinking they can just step in and teach a class.
My follow-up question to that is, so we offer our high school students, uh, opportunities to take college classes while they're still enrolled. And to my knowledge, college professors aren't required to have a teaching license. So, um, we already have teachers. We already have people in our.
Without a license.
Without a license. So I don't see this as being any different. Huh, and I hadn't thought about it until you brought it up. We do have kids who take the college classes. Those folks don't have a college, uh, necessarily have a, a teaching license.
And having seen, I personally have sat in on classes at a local higher education facility, um, that I've had fantastic teachers, and I've had extremely poor teachers. And so that is an issue probably that we should be looking at because not everybody that steps in front of our kids.
And that would, yeah, and that would be, and a school issue, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
And that's, uh, applicable in our schools too. We have some great teachers and, you know, some teachers have credentials.
Yeah, I, I guess I was assuming that this, um, innovation school or zone would have the autonomy to determine whether they would require certification or not, is that incorrect?
I can't hear you.
That's correct. That, the, the autonomy would exist within the alternate governance model on what qualification requirements exist for teaching staff, which is how all our alternative governance model schools currently operate.
So, um, I, I love the idea of building a workforce for the needs that are within our community. Um, I, I'm curious if you could touch a little bit on what's already out in the market? You mentioned a school in D forty-nine that offers something similar.
No, I was using, uh, P-Tech High as an example of enrollment pools.
Okay.
They don't do anything like that.
Okay.
It's a, that's carpentry, electricians, plumber's skills trade.
Okay, that's my thought.
I was using it as an example of.
Sure.
There is a market for developing ju, workforce development. That, that's, the, 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 um, I worked for a governor, I worked for a school board, and I worked for a mayor in the three different districts that I was a deputy in. Our small city has the largest disconnect between its city government and the schools that are within it. Jana and the mayor and I and others are on a path to bring those closer together. We see, the mayor sees that a successful District eleven is in his best interest. And I would say previous administrations didn't necessarily make that connection. From a political perspective, particularly a challenged school district can be seen as all risk and no reward. But this particular mayor really sees that we're graduate twelve, thirteen hundred kids last year. A third of our kids don't have a plan. We've met our graduation requirements, so from the letter of the law, we're done. But you can see our language is now pre-K to fourteen. This new administration is excited on the idea that the more, the lower we can make that number of kids who don't have a plan, the better the city will be. It's a less draw on city social services, on any of the things that the mayor has to worry about. So I think there, this workforce piece is really undersung on what this initiative really delivers. On the ability to really get a through line of understanding, how do we develop skills that prepare kids? And it's not if they can just go to UCCS, I'm not trying to fill UCCS's coffer. It's just, they happen to own the local curriculum on it. It's not a failure if a kid goes to MIT here instead and becomes a rocket scientist that way. But being able to excite that, um, I'm always interested in the crescent of our city, uh, from the federal government and how little connectivity we have with it as a local, um, uh, institution. So we go from the Air Force Academy and we stretch all the way around through Shriver and Pete Field and end up back at Fort Carson. And so many of our kids just don't know what those opportunities are. And many of those families, they're not local. But take it from a guy, as soon as you get to Colorado Springs in your military career, you spend the rest of your life trying to get back here. That's, and so we can close that crescent shape and turn it into a circle. I think it's a real deliverable. My events in the room, raise your hand. Number one way to student achievement?
Access to high-quality instruction.
So, uh, in the community.
Did you raise your hand, Lyman?
So in the community with other surrounding districts, there is not this type of school.
Nobody has gone after science and technology, it's a missing niche. Um, it exists, there are strong programs in many high schools in the city. I'm not saying that there isn't. But I go back to that SIVA model, I don't know if everybody remembers, is that Nikki Myers? Look at that, you're just, your ears must have been ringing.
Good things.
Uh, when I, when I talked about my adult children and I said the mistake that I made as a parent was I found the perfect school for my daughter. The absolute perfect school for my daughter, my eldest, was in IB Diploma School on the East Coast Robinson Secondary School. And because it was a secondary school, it went six to twelve. And so my other kids were in that middle school as my daughter was in high school. And then I made that be the right fit for my two boys, because it was a perfect fit for my daughter, and I was in the boundary and I had rented to be in that school, so I had made a commitment for my family. Instead of, when I translate that and say, if I would have come to District eleven when I had three kids, my daughter would have went to Palmer, cause that was the IB Diploma School, and she would have loved that school. My middle kid would have probably went to CMA because he just needed some structure. He really needed some structure that wasn't about instruction, it just needed a value set. He needed somebody to be a little tougher on him than the colonel was willing to be. And my youngest, because he was a violinist, either would have went to Coronado or would have went to SIVA. And I would have let that been his choice. Did he want a comprehensive high school experience with a good music program? Would have been super happy at Coronado to do that. Or did he really wanna geek out on his violin and go to SIVA and start creating music like he's creating now? I don't know what the answer would have been for that. What the city doesn't have is that geek out space for science and technology. It has science and technology in many of the neighboring schools. I would never wanna say that a neighboring district isn't offering some STEM programming. But how do we geek kids out? And if you haven't been to the cybersecurity lab, the Ops Center in there, if you remember the movie Minority Report, could you just imagine kids in there looking and saying like, there's a cyber attack in Ukraine right now? What are we gonna do about that? And turning that into a class, cause it's real time and it's happening. And, you know, we do this in schools, we have weekend hackathons, now that Nikki's here, I'm immediately thinking of her readathons. And, you know, we, we do those things. But can we do this in a hyper-specific way that really doesn't cost us? And so the general budget is, we would treat this like we treated a pathway school. We would create some extra funds because to be a niche school, you're gonna have to have a little bit more money. But we've already, we've already perfected that. We saw what it took to turn Columbia, and if you haven't been to Columbia lately, go. If you haven't been to Martinez, go. See what your investments have done into those specific pathway schools. So it really becomes a new way to get to a pathway school without having to ask somebody else to change. We just say, let's bring a new idea into the middle space.
I can't help but wonder if, if we offer it up to one of our own schools, this opportunity though, or this kind of focus, if they wouldn't just jump on that anyway. And so, to me, it feels like we kind of focused on a pathway school and put a rocket in front of the school. You know, if it, if someone were willing to put it there, without having to create another school, which will be a draw. And while we might not be looking at closing schools, we have, again, we have the underutilized buildings, and we're talking about location. I'm presuming you're gonna wanna put this program in a D eleven school, existing school, that's what it sounds like.
I, I think the incubation period is best utilized in unutilized space, yes.
Mm-hmm. And the extra dollars for a pathway school, so they will be getting more than our average student perhaps. And, and students who, again, maybe we could have done a block schedule just straight into UCCS or something. And again, I know there's other programs, but I'm, I, I look forward to seeing the additional information, and I'll have more questions for you.
Awesome. Awesome.
Thanks. Uh, so can you speak a little bit to the partnership with UCCS and how that's coming along?
Yeah.
I mean that they're like, is it already, they're in agreement to let us have access to this lab? And actually, let me back up a little bit.
So I I think, I don't know if we have a confirmation that Jennifer will be here next week, but at least a representative from UCCS will be here.
We do, we we believe it'll be Jennifer and and they're very enthused to be a partner in this.
And so a lot of that has delayed in waiting for that announcement. And now that, I guess it was about six weeks ago, Jennifer has been announced as the permanent leader of UCCS. She has been a part of the original conversations, has been super excited. There there's an existing model out there, you know, again, not smartest people in the room. Purdue University has has done a very similar model in authorizing its own charter school. That's, that's really a a a construct of which we're building off of. And then instead of it just being another charter school, which has certain limitations to it, how do we create it in an innovation zone that really brings an economy of scale forward? That as I look at strong representatives of our of our charter sector, the pathway to success for charter school is usually about a decade. It takes about a decade to finally find that niche. We think as being a program within the larger community of all D eleven schools, that it's attractive to charter school families as well as to district eleven operated school families, as well as it is to neighboring school families, as well as it can be to families that have completely opted out of the system. We think it really taps into the thirty-five hundred untapped kids that the demographer said that we should be going after. Do you have another question?
Yeah, so. Just for my clarity, when I read this application, it seems like it's pretty specific and focused on cyber science, cyber science. But like the overarching idea of building a workforce to meet the needs of Space Force and the the tech industry, to me, that that is very broad. I mean, you're gonna have systems engineering, mechanical engineering, aerospace, all the things that you could find a path, many pathways to get to kind of this industry. And so am I understanding correctly that this school will be more focused on cyber science specifically? Or is it that this is viewed as almost kind of an engineering prep school?
Yeah, I'll take that one if you'd like me to.
Sure.
I think one of the things that.
Could you come up here, you can sit at that, sit there and introduce yourself, introduce yourself.
Thank you, and again, my name's Merlin Holmes, I've developed a lot of charter schools in state of Colorado and I've been helping with this project. I'm a former science teacher, so I get where your question comes from. I think one of the things that this school is gonna be very strong is all the sciences, engineering, technology. But one of the things that we have the advantage of is because the cybersecurity center is part of this project as well, is that we will be stronger in that than maybe any any STEM school in the country. I mean, we we've done some research on what some of the excellent STEM schools around the country are doing. And I think our ability to connect them in the same building eventually, when we get, you know, that permanent building, will make us maybe second to none in the ability to accelerate in that particular area without ignoring the rest of those. Cause if you look at our graduation, you know, the sequence of courses that the kids would take, they're gonna take biology, chemistry, physics, engineering. They're gonna take computer languages and coding and programming and all that. But then we have the additional expertise within that very same building to give them a, probably a higher level of cybersecurity expertise than maybe any STEM school in the country. So it's it's a, it's a benefit that we have that others don't have rather than an exclusive point of the program, if that makes sense. Does that answer your question?
And it's certainly opportunistic. It's there.
Right.
So let's use it and let's make it a, make make the main thing the main thing, or how's that saying?
And what you're talking about is not just this region or the state, but in the country.
Yes.
When you're talking about cybersecurity, that second to none in the country, the focus being cybersecurity. What we can offer in that specific area would be second to none.
I believe that's true. I mean, if you look at this programs that that UCCS has, the cybersecurity center there, that's there, the the space ISAC program that's within that same building. UCCS is also bringing in additional commercial partners within this whole project and ecosystem. And and if if none of you, if you haven't met Vance and you'll meet him next week, the fire that comes out of him and the the passion and the ability to deliver on that is just amazing. And this will be an amazing school. And I and I think the partners that are committed to making this happen are, it's the highest level of community partnership and commitment between government, industry, and education that I've ever seen in a new startup school. And I've, and I've seen startup schools and been a part of evaluating charter schools and title one schools for thirty years. But it's the strongest group of partners I've ever seen. And that's why even from the beginning, when 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 I got pulled into the process, well, Superintendent Gall had already had conversations with Vance about this this idea and and they were talking to community leaders. And I got pulled in, I was like, yeah, let me help on this project, I would love to be a part of this project. Cause I know it's gonna be fantastic. And I think it gives you buy-in from your community and the ability to serve students in a way that's never happened, maybe anywhere.
So I think that answers the question of why are we just not doing this at a school within the traditional operated schools? The partnership and the power that comes from making this through line all the way through. Now, I I the board could task me to go do that, but I'm just gonna tell you that that lift is a lot harder when you're trying to convince people that the way that you wanna do it and not let them tell us how it should be done is much harder to plow. I think districts have been trying that for a long time. And again, I'll go to the Cherry Creek Innovation Center, very innovative, but really incremental. Having kids do something at a different building than what they did in their high school that still is owned and run by the system that built it, they're gonna run themselves out of money faster than they can actually ever realize what's supposed to happen. The mental health supports program that they're giving at that school should just be happening at Ann Shute's Medical Center and not at the Cherry Creek Innovation Center. Skip the whole step. Get to the school without walls concept. Get to the idea that don't limit our thinking into what is traditionally been the four-wall solution. It is the four-wall solution because I started with the gift of public education is local control. The curse of public education is local control. Cause we can't get out of our own thinking sometimes to realize that there's this enormity of resources available for not just this school, but for a a whole way that we redefine workforce development.
Yeah, I mean, I've been thinking about that, this, I love this idea. I see this as kind of a model for like dental hygienists. I mean, I, my cousin's wife is in that program, it's super competitive and hard to get into. There's just not that many schools out there offering it. So how to kind of building that workforce, love the concept. So just understand that when I say that, I guess I challenge the premise that we're gonna tap into the fifteen percent that are unsure of their future plans. I think the kids that will be drawn to this are probably headed to graduate anyways with, towards engineering or some sort of field. So I just think.
Yeah, and and I don't disagree in the short term. I think changing the general dynamic of the educational experience to be, to get you to workforce. Then the next obvious question is, what's the next pathway that we need to be this disruptive on?
I think that's what we.
Right, and I had introduced language last year and and I, it wasn't quippy enough, but MT two four. Every kid needs to know that they're on a pathway to the middle class, military technical, two and four-year job solutions. We can't graduate kids who don't have a plan. Now, by the law, we graduate kids all the time because they meet the requirement. Our job, particularly when I always talk about us as a senior governance team, our job is to set an aspiration that says every district eleven graduate is gonna be on a pathway up and through the middle class. That's what we have, not every kid meets a graduation requirement and then it's up to them. America has proven that the institutional obstacles that exist generation after generation, particularly when you look at our growing population set, means that we will continue to see that number rise in the wrong direction. If we don't set a flag that says, why not create a school that actually connects itself to the workforce? Instead of saying, well, you know, we gave them the right skill sets and it just didn't work out. Like we, the 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 graduation rate's seventy percent, that's not acceptable. It's not, this doesn't solve the thirty percent that don't graduate, but it changes a dynamic that says, we're a district that will do everything that the law allows us to do. Remember, I get beat up for this language that I say, I will do whatever I can to make sure that I get versions of qualified adults in front of children. I will use the law to my advantage to do that. People turn that against me because it doesn't fit their narrative. Our children, this isn't about this, our children deserve us to press those laws and to define new laws. Because if we don't, the kids that are underserved by that fifteen percent will become twenty percent, will become thirty percent. And we'll still be in business because we get ten thousand dollars for each one of them every year. Nobody connects us, and this is why I love what the mayor has represented. He sees the school system as his seed population set for the future of his city. And I don't think he does it because he thinks they're gonna vote for him. I think he does it because he fundamentally cares to make sure that those kids are gonna be successful.
So another question I have is, just do you have a rough estimate on how many kids would be enrolling in August?
This is on page fifty-six.
Okay, is that?
Fifty-six, page fifty-six.
What was it?
Page fifty-six.
Yeah, page fifty-six.
And what's the number?
Hundred and fifty.
Okay.
First year.
For the first year.
And this is, you already have, and maybe that's in page fifty-six, you already have like written commitments from families that say.
Not very many.
Okay, how many?
Not any at all, that I saw in your packet.
And we, when there was discussion about whether this would be a proposed charter school or innovation school, we kind of.
Stopped advertising.
Telling people about the school until, with that decision's been made, so.
But you are confident that you can get close to that number, the first year of operation in August, hundred and fifty?
I'm very confident that, and and part of what gives me that confidence is if you look at the partners who are involved in this school and proposing it and the, how important it is to their core values and their core missions, I think, I think you'll see a tremendous response to this school.
So. Would it be safe to say that costs to the district are essentially that we're providing space that we already have anyways? Like what, uh, cause I assume that, you know, you would then be providing the staff, all the things, and you'll just be funded through the hundred or fifty kids that you have to then pay for the staff that you have? I guess I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, so so we we have added in a pathway school model, some set asides for new school, changeover of curriculum. We ran a couple of hundred thousand dollars per elementary school for them. We have a two million dollar overall budget, I think Brandon was still there, that we still have over half of for those pathway schools. So we believe there is a similar startup cost to the district. But the fundamental relationship is, this operates on a per pupil funding. And what buyback services occur or don't occur, most of that is easier because it's our school as an innovation school. So we don't have to go through the, well, if our security guards respond to an alert, that's fifty dollars per. Like those contractual relationships with charters are exhausting to go through. So the 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 intent is, it becomes sustainable, but there are certainly, you know, a startup cost similar to the pathways. And we've communicated that in in the early conversations, which seem to be agreeable. We also think that an aspect of what district eleven has not really been able to do well is really fundraise around school ideas. We think this can be a real catalyst to representing district eleven into this, I mean, let's be frank. Charter schools fundraise, they get dollars to open through philanthropy. We don't get dollars through philanthropy. We believe that this could be a space that we could bring philanthropy in, offset costs, and create future investment that might not stop just at this school. I think there's huge opportunity for this district to think about its foundation in a way that says, don't you wanna be a buy-in partner to the work that we're doing? Right, I think we've turned that corner. I believe this board or the last board before it was elected to change the future of this system. We have declined enrollment for thirty years, we finally stabilized. People wanna pick apart, how did you stabilize? All I did was pay attention to the market, where are families going? We've created school models and we've brought in school models of ways that families are choosing. Otherwise, we're Bed Bath and Beyond. I said it during the interview, a very slow death of a thousand cuts is not the way to go. Better to make investments, create research and development, see if they work or they don't work. The the whole beauty to me, particularly if you were to call this a charter school or in an innovation school, because innovation schools and zones have failed. They failed because they didn't deliver on the vision. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Yep, market demand will deliver it.
Market demand is what, and and market follows quality. People go towards where the quality is.
You have more questions?
I I that's, it's very exciting, it just sounds like maybe there's more details that will come, so.
So, yeah, I'll come to you, Dr. Carey. But going back to Director Art's questions about things like special education, ELL needs, transportation, those kinds of questions, does that need to be answered right now, Superintendent Gall? When this application packet goes in front of the state, do we need to have answers for all those questions? How do we admit students into the school, is it via lottery system or things like that? Does all that need to be answered in the packet?
I I don't believe it does, I haven't had the conversations with the state, but I'll get a follow-on to those specifics. There's certainly, I mean, we are going to, all schools in the state of Colorado are obligated to meet those demand signals. So there is no, there is no truth to the myth of, if you have an alternative governance model, you get to wave your way out of supporting special education requirements or ELL requirements. How the demand signal is met, I think initially falls into just schools of choice. I would, boy, would we love to have the problem of having to get to a lottery and a and an over-demand of capacity. Like that's a goal for our board, is to have a school that we have to have a conversation about lottery and sibling rights and ways that we get access to to demand signal for school. So I would say in the first couple of years, I don't think that's a challenge, but I bet Vance would love to say, by the fifth year, he's gonna need a lottery, cause it will be the best school in the country to deliver on that.
I I'll just follow up on that, I, some of what you mentioned absolutely, sorry, Thomas, I. Is not going to be in what an innovation plan requires, but there is, there are lists and this is not complete by that. You even have to say the length of a school day and the year and year of the school, and I know that was addressed, so it's sort of there. But student promotion, graduation policies, assessment plans, staffing and or compensation plans. It, so it feels like things were touched on, but they're not quite solid. So there is an existing list, it's on that CDE page, so I recommend everybody go look at it. And while I have the floor, I'm gonna make an apology, we were talking about Jana, the Chambers CEO, and it's Jana Reader Claymire.
Reader Claymire, thank you.
Reader Claymire, so I just wanted to get that out there.
I have a Shawna and a Jana, so if you wanna talk about challenges in first name pronunciation.
You're done.
Uh, for the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I wanna ask a clarifying question and then I wanna ask a question about just kind of market here. So the clarifying question that I wanna ask is, as I'm kind of looking through this application, one thing that does strike me is kind of a lot of the specifics that they have in mind. You know, one of the things that we've talked about this evening is the distinction between spinning this program up from the ground up versus trying to take an already existing programmer school that we have and kind of, you know, work it into this idea. And the thing that I'm thinking about is, some of the specific things they have in mind here speak to why incorporating it into already existing architecture may not be a good idea. And that you kind of need to build it from the ground up. You know, cause they have a specific list of, here are the credits we want, you know, four credits of science and engineering, four credits specific, or three credits of computers and technology. I'm guessing this is not the same as what our high schools expect out of graduation, right? They have in here that they're, they want all the kids to take the pre-ACT, I'm guessing that's not something we require either. So would our existing high schools even? So would our existing high schools even want to do the things that are outlined in this document? My my guess would be not so much. Am I wrong about that?
Uh, you know, I'll I'll agree with you, uh, because it certainly fits the narrative of where I'm where I'm trying to lead the the board and the community. Um, I think change is hard. I think what I've learned in the first year and a half is that asking people to do things fundamentally different than what they're doing is harder than introducing a new idea. Uh, particularly if you can introduce a new idea that isn't perceived as a threat, um, then it's upside instead of downside. I think the gifted magnet program was a perfect example of that, as a lesson learned, at least as an administration and the board. Certainly upside for homes and freedom, uh, but whether or not we correctly calculated what that risk was to West and Fremont in our original planning. Uh, we worked our way through that, but here, um, new initiatives built from the ground up are normally uh, uh, have more momentum behind them than the constant, I told you that wouldn't work because somebody's cheese is gonna move, right? That's, it's hard to move cheese.
What I'm thinking too, you know, if you wanna take the ideas here and go to an already existing institution, there are a lot of already existing stakeholders that are gonna want input and need to sign off on the plan, and that that just seems very difficult to me. So, my next question is, when I look at the enrollment plan and, you know, year one is a hundred and fifty students and year two, two hundred and forty-five, do we have a sense for where these students are going to come from? Because of what, I don't remember, I don't know if I'm remembering this correctly, but I seem to remember that someone once said that D eleven loses the majority of its students in between middle school and high school, is that accurate?
Elementary school and middle school.
But yeah, our our worst matriculation is between middle and high school.
Okay, so so, you know, when we're thinking about the way that this program would fit into kind of just the educational infrastructure of Colorado Springs, are we thinking these students are people we're going to attract out of homeschooling and attract from neighboring districts? Or are we just taking our own group of students and, you know, pushing a hundred and fifty of them into this program? Like, do we have any sense for the specific market we're?
The general belief is using the demographer study that said, we're leaving thirty-five hundred families that would become D eleven families if we offered, and we had six, six main areas. Universal pre K before the governor had decided that, we did that. More specific programming in niche opportunities, which this happens to be one of them. Being more open to uh, alternative education, or I'm sorry, online opportunities. We haven't done that yet, we have Spark Online, but we haven't really analyzed is that meeting the needs of the family that isn't comfortable in the comprehensive experience? Or is there a way for us to tap in the homeschool market and the real online market that's out there? All those things have uh, gives and takes. I believe the real answer is, is if I looked at the numbers from JICA and the numbers from Thomas McLaren as two established charters, they both ran about sixty forty. Sixty percent of the families for, were already D eleven families and forty percent were external that chose that school for a specific reason. So I believe that we'll see a similar market, which is yes, we'll get internal families that think that's a good idea. But we'll also bring in families that we have lost that are trying to find this someplace else, and particularly at that matriculation point.
I think you look at Nikki Myers' school, Academy ACL, K eight. You've got families that are used to a very unique s- school sitting, and then they have to go into a normal conference of high school. There's nothing for them that kind of aligns with that niche that you've offered. There are a number of other K eight charters and alternative schools where these kids go, the parents are saying, I want something more at high school, but I can't go anywhere, all I've got are these basic, comprehensive, not basic. All I've got are these traditional hu- public high schools. So if we could consider marketing to schools like Academy ACL, to other K eight charter schools where you go, hey, you like the uniqueness of this K eight campus, come check out this if you've got a a student that's, you know, geared towards engineering or technology or cybersecurity, and that's your market base right there. On top of existing D eleven and surrounding school districts, kids who go, yeah, I got a, you know, an interest in that. So I think you're gonna pull, that's, if I was marketing, I'd market to the K eight schools around the city to go, hey, you like this model. Jump into this ninth grade.
I think a lot of this is about less loss.
Yeah.
Um, it's hard to measure where where families choose to go.
Right.
Um, but we're a choice system and and if I went all the way back to the first slide, we're just adding to the choice portfolio.
That's right.
Dr. Carey, you have any more? So the answer to your question is, right now it's, we are going to attract some from D eleven and some from outside, but we don't have a specific.
And not lose as many people as we lose by not having this type of opportunity now. But again, it's market driven, right? You know, I live and die by the very word choice. Remember, if the district, if if we wanna pick a lobby position, we wanna pick a lobby position, get on the bus and go up there and say, choice is bad. Because we increase by almost eight thousand kids if we eliminate choice. So if we wanna be the largest in the in the county, we eliminate choice. And you have to go to the school that we draw a boundary around and says, that's what you have to do because that's your zip code and that's where you're going to school. Now, the state's gone beyond that for twenty plus years now, and every one of us has exercised choice in one way or another. Some of us exercise choice by buying a house in the neighborhood of the school we wanna go to. Some of us drive our kids either into the district or out of the district. Some of us don't live in the district. I'm the only employee that's required to live in the district. We celebrate choice. Oh, the board members do, too. I'm an employee, you're all volunteers, the volunteers. The the state has established and and we have certainly been a system that has lived within choice. This is a new menu option for choice.
This is maybe a question for next week. Why, so if I think about transportation, right? Right now, correct me if I'm if I'm misunderstanding this. If you want to go to a different um, neighborhood school, you can get on a school bus and it will take you there, that's accurate?
No.
That's not accurate, okay.
You can only go to your boundary school or a gifted magnet or a magnet school. And then we will provide transportation for that. If you choose to go to Martinez because you wanna be in an arts integration school and you don't live in the boundary of Martinez, our current board policy requires you to provide transportation for that.
So as an innovation school, I'm assuming this would not have any geographical boundary that it would be attached to? So if if parents want to go here, they have to get kids there, is that accurate?
Now, what I would say is, by current obligation of our policies, that's a correct statement. However, charter schools have their own transportation solutions all day long. Some charter schools own buses, some charter schools lease buses from the district of which they are in. There are really strange laws in the state, this was the challenge that we had when we tried to bring CELEA in in a transfer application. CELEA right now, because they're authorized by CSI, can provide its own transportation to any family that CELEA believes is financially viable to them, no matter where they live. As soon as they became a District eleven authorized school, CELEA could no longer transport kids from D two, D forty-nine, and D twenty to come to that school. Because that's the way the state law is written. So we would have had to ask permission from each one of those neighboring districts, and so now, we get into the ugly side of choice. Why the heck would I let you take my kid by providing them a bus? I'll invent, I'll develop my own language school. The the lang- the language of the law is really quirky. Um, uh, Mr. Miller might be able to comment on if they're ever gonna change that, there's been lobby against it, because it's.
Darn lawyers.
Darn lawyers.
There there is no energy in this session to do that, I'm aware of.
Um, I do think transportation overall is a larger conversation, I'm working with Chief Odom, and we've thought differently about transportation. Right now, and off topic, we utilize about forty percent of the seats on our buses every day. We have a bus driver shortage, but our buses are all half empty. So does the board wanna consider things like, if you pick a pathway school, we'll provide you transportation if you need it. Right now, we just say a magnet school, and a pathway school is not a magnet school. But right now, we have very few buses that are running full. So how do we fill up the buses? Now, that would probably mean a longer bus ride. But if you live over there by Midland and you wanna go to an arts plus integration school and you can't provide transportation, maybe we could take one of the buses that drives around and add fifteen or twenty kids to it to get families that need that transportation to go there. So we're looking at those numbers now, because the data's driving us to that. So we go from a transportation crisis to maybe an opportunity. Maybe we can increase the service level by rethinking utilization. Now, transportation people will tell you, forty percent is great, that's awesome, but every one of us, and again, I'm a flyer, right? If you're on an airplane that only is forty percent full, you better not like that flight time and you better not like that route. Because the airline's not bringing it back next quarter. If it's not, sorry, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna be full and Group seven and eight have to check their luggage. If it's not full, it doesn't run. We accept forty, forty-five percent as acceptable. And yet, we have families that can't get transportation to school, right? We we ought to be, that's a math problem, it's a math problem.
And maybe somebody can correct me if I'm wrong on this, uh, Buena Vista is a Montessori school with no boundaries, am I right on that? And then every child.
School with no walls.
Yeah, but ev- every child, no neighborhood boundaries, and every child then is transported by the parent to Buena Vista. We don't run bus services, would I be correct in that?
That's a correct statement, but any, any family has the opportunity to show up at a bus stop if they're a D eleven student and will get them on under space availability. So if they're choiced out, they can catch a bus stop within our boundary. Does that make sense? But yes, you are correct.
By space available.
Yeah.
And and not guaranteed, so we don't promise those routes. And we're rethinking if we can, particularly for the high demand choice locations.
But you don't have a bus running to Buena Vista, I think.
No.
Yeah, exactly.
It sounds like the innovation zone would allow for some sort of transportation collaboration discussion.
Yeah, we're we're, we don't think transportation's a limitation, we also find that bus ridership at high school gets less and less. Uh, high school kids find ways to schools, um, and uh, yeah, so.
They find ways to Academy ACL, uh, from Peyton and Callahan and and Ellicott. I mean, they find ways to other K eight campuses across the city. If if they wanna come to the school, parents will make the sacrifice, just like I have to make a sacrifice for my chiropractor now whose walk-in hours are seven to eight AM. So I gotta do that before my school kids uh, drop off. And if I appreciate health and chiropractic care, I'm gonna have to make the change. And so I think parents will do the same thing for the the market drive.
Any further discussion, go.
Yes, um, I mentioned, you know, student promotion being part of, and graduation policies being part of the plan that has to be included in the application. My, I do have a question about, like, the classes seem to be very prescribed. So if you don't pass a class, um, your algebra in ninth grade, um, or I mean, to say two classes, I've seen some of the failing rates in in some of the schools. What, does that hold a student back, will they be the ninth grader the next year? You're up for that?
I I I.
Do we know?
We'll take that offline and try and provide that answer. I wanna review how our current uh, charter schools um, also operate on promotability. Um, I don't think that has been prescribed by any place in the state, so I think that falls to school level decision. But I'll I'll get that ready.
Is writing is better, I think, for these sorts of questions.
Okay, that's fine. So a couple of questions I had, and I'm glad that it is on the slide. So Superintendent Call, one thing that you talked about during the incubation period, it would be best to use uh, an underutilized space and put this possibly as a school within a school. So that provides an opportunity to use the other schools' resources if necessary, because I don't know if this school, when it starts, is going to have athletic facilities, uh, and if these kids want to participate in football, they can use the bigger school, is that the?
That's correct.
Okay, and the second thing, more so that timeline that I have up there, or the timeline that you guys have up there. So my understanding is the board, uh, this concept's non-action and two weeks from now, action. So by end of February, if this board is going to approve that resolution, then it goes in front of CDE. State, and they have a sixty day time window?
Yeah, they've told us that they would anticipate a thirty day turn this time of the year.
Okay, so thirty day time window, so most likely, uh, beginning of April, they will let us know uh, if this, they got the thumbs up from the state. Does that give you enough time from beginning of April to?
Well, we laid it out there that we believe that it does.
That is, that's all I wanted to know, that you can have this up and running. Most of the time, parents are making the decisions to pick a school at this point in time. Now, the school is not even being marketed, and you are saying in middle of April, you can start marketing the school and attract students into that school for the August uh, school year.
Yeah, and I understand your question, it's something I think about, and but I do believe we can do that, yes.
Okay, and also hire the necessary staff that you need in April for a start of the school year.
Yeah, I I think the board has demonstrated in the past that when good ideas don't come to fruition, we don't execute. So that's happened before in the past. I remember it was my first introduction to Brandon, when he made the recommendation for, which was the school that wasn't running?
LSIA.
LSIA. And so, uh, that went through a similar set of approvals and conversations, and I am certain that they sat at the table and said they could and they would, and then they didn't, and then we went a different direction. Um, and so I I think this falls into the, I I've got a crystal ball of, I think this is a very unique time and space and a confluence of uh, partners that can do something that hasn't been done before. But the the reality exists in the future, right? I mean.
Okay, so when this subject matter comes into front of the board next week as non-action, what are some things that is left unanswered that the board wants answer on so they can act on it in the next two or three weeks? Do you have, Jason?
I would assume if we're targeting ninth grade.
Director Hefley, uh, your director Hefley is excused.
Thank you.
Very good. Um, if if we're targeting ninth grade as, you know, year one, we would probably be considering uh, one of our high schools, right, so they have access to the high school sports and and facilities and and needs. So I probably would like an idea of maybe like your top two considerations of what high school you might wanna house the same, if it's at the Roy J. Watson Academic Campus, if it's at Coronado or, um, Palmer, I mean, if if we're using the site.
We're doing that analysis now, um, again, the challenge that exists.
You don't have that decision yet, but just maybe like, hey, we're narrowing down to one of these two or three, or just have an idea of that.
Yep.
That'd be one piece.
We can do that.
Okay, anything else? Location is one thing, uh, we already talked about potential budget and pact, and you said that. Is that question answered, you said that you set aside some?
Uh, we'll put together that budget to show what it actually looks like, um, and bring that uh, next week as well. I think it's been put together, it just didn't migrate its way into a slide deck here.
Back to you.
Yeah, just, and then like a calendar, I, I I don't, how do I phrase this? I've been seeing a lot of research on kids in high engaging classrooms uh, or opportunities don't need a full school day to learn what they need to learn. So, or a full calendar, a hundred eighty-five days of contact days to learn what they need to learn. So I'm of the accord to offer flexibility in Director Art's question of the calendar. Um, I would, I wouldn't mind seeing a a audacious calendar, you know, piece of getting kids, you know, out, these are like kids, getting high schoolers out to their, you know, um, back to their families or back to a part-time job or to a, you know, works workforce prep type session, um, paid internships, whatever it may be, so I'm kind of looking forward to some flexibility you might offer in the calendar.
Are you talking for this specific innovation school or the D eleven?
For this specific, because it's innovation zone.
I feel like that's, it comes back to that board's.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, I wanna, yeah, I wanna see it.
Okay.
Let them decide it, but I'm encouraged to see what they could offer within the innovation zone. Okay.
Time is certainly a resource to be considered.
Yes.
Okay, anything else that you would like to see next week?
Well, I I've mentioned many of my questions, I have some follow-ups as well that I'll send to Superintendent, and hopefully.
And you already said that, to her email, you would post.
Yes, well, we're gonna lump a couple of them together, because some of them are financial, some of them are governance, so, but I won't change any of your language. I might reorder them, so we don't have to say C three above.
Okay.
That'd be great.
If you can get that answer and then copy the rest of the board.
Happy to do it.
So then then all of us have the answers to the questions that she. Okay, and if you have any further questions, if you can get it back to.
I will copy the board on that, you know?
Yeah, as as quickly as possible so they can respond. Um, and then we look forward to the partners being here next week and being part of the presentation, anything else the board needs? being part of the presentation. Anything else the board needs?
Yeah.
I think, um, the location is for me, I'm looking at the capacity report right now, and so I'm just very curious what you're gonna come to us with for a location suggestion. Um, and just knowing what's also available already at some of our high schools. Like Mitchell, you have the aviation things that could tie in very nicely. I know Palmer has some really cool STEM stuff already going on. Um, I'm actually not as familiar with Coronado's STEM offerings, um, and then the the Lawson campus, so I think I would, I'm just thinking in terms of capacity and utilization of our buildings, but we'll see what you bring.
Great.
But my thinking on that is, um, and I'm glad you brought that up, because my thinking went straight to if we're going to use, um, resources within the city, and you had mentioned the cybersecurity location on Nevada that, um, the location would deal more with, um, locating this school as a standalone to, um, to where the resources are gonna be. Um, so that we don't have kids traveling all the way across town, whether it's, we had, you, we've mentioned the hospital, we've mentioned the cybersecurity. We mentioned, um, are we talking about a permanent location inside this school? I didn't think we were.
No.
So I'm thinking about this location being in a, in a place that kids can radiate out with the least amount of travel time and have it be equitable for everybody. So you don't have some kids close to Memorial Hospital, but other kids have to travel, you know, twice the distance to get someplace, so. Yeah, whatever you come up with.
I just wanna add community voice. If if this were absolutely a charter school, we would have asked the DAC for feedback. And that hasn't happened again. I know it's up there, but I would be curious what our community representatives.
So, Director, I can tell you that I did get a a phone call the other day from Marion Clausen, and um, we spoke for about twenty minutes and she was, now, this is an informal conversation for sure, but she could not have been more supportive and was saying, I I love this idea. I'd love to see how to get my kids into this, so. Now, again, it's an informal conversation, but she reached out to me on that, so. We we wanna do more around this.
Is it going to go to a DAC meeting?
Yeah.
We're supposed to follow up with Marion after today to hear what the board said, but they're aware and we're going to find a vehicle, whether they're gonna pull the charter review committee together or do it with the whole body of the DAC or what that'll be. Marion will make that decision, but it is gonna go to them.
Well, the timeline is constrained, uh, because we have to make the decision by February twenty eighth, so I don't know how much time.
There's a DAC meeting in between.
Yes.
Right, that's happening next week, I think, February fifteenth, but I don't know if they have the ability to do a full review like they do with the charter school.
Right.
In that timeframe, but at least if we can get some feedback from the DAC at that, from the DAC meeting. That would go a long way in, um, getting some feedback from the community as far as what they see.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? I'm just looking at some of the things, um, up here and, uh, some of the, um, attachments and stuff that you said that were missing, they will take care of it.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that they default.
We got it. I just had, I I just got it. I didn't get it forwarded.
They exist.
Yeah. They do.
Thank you.
So as far as the governance model, model itself, even though this is going to be a district eleven school, they will have their own board. But they ultimately report to the D eleven school board?
Uh, you then take on that type of authorizer type role of their governance.
Okay.
But if the schedule comes in a way that works for that alternate governance, that Jason doesn't like, Jason doesn't like it, but as long as it falls within the confines of what the state requirements are, then the alternate governance model gets that decision made.
That's right.
And the innovation zone that we are talking about, if we open in the future more innovation schools under that zone, would all of those schools have to be a STEM school?
No, um, the schools then, and I'll let Nicole correct what I don't get right here. This zone application is asking for waivers for the following items. You could remove and replace STEM with whatever you wanted if those were the same waivers. The weirdest part about innovation is you could have ten innovation zones of each and individual school, because each one of them needed a different set of waivers to be able to deliver on what it wanted to. And so the the language that the state uses can be confusing and the zone being more than one and or having to represent everything. This is an innovation application for a C S S T model. There are other innovative school opportunities that exist in other districts that don't follow this template. That's what the law, it it asks you, what do you need the waiver for to be able to deliver on this? It doesn't seek scalability, it seeks replicability in an individualized sense. Anything from, uh, my, uh,
So, what I'm asking is also, like, can there be multiple innovation zones in the same school district?
Experienced. Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Or there can be innovation schools that don't live in an innovation zone.
Wow, okay.
Of which we have two.
Of which we have two.
We have two right now, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, great.
And and actually, Jill isn't here anymore. Director Haley's in for Dr. Carey. It's it's Mitchell in its own innovation zone, and in case you didn't know, it's also north.
Oh, just school though, not zone.
Right.
Innovation school.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, uh, if, uh, that kinda wraps up this discussion. We look forward to all the partners being here and their voice and input in this process next week, and if you have any further questions, get it to Superintendent Gall in a time of anxiety. In the meantime, Superintendent Gall will answer your questions that you put and, uh, get that to, um, the end here board, uh, and also we will, uh, at some point in time, find out, um, uh, what the legal implication is about him serving on that board.
I I I, to that point, I think each of us as board members, we need to consider if our employee, our one employee is working or is representing a board that then has to answer to us a couple of years later. It's just, it's kind of wonky with that arrangement, so I think we will.
Well, we'll put, uh, maybe the solution is put Dr. Mendelsburg in that, um, on that board. I don't know that. So.
I realize there's a great deal of interest.
Yeah.
I happen to be a rocket scientist, so it is, uh, particularly interesting to me.
Sure. Yes.
Um, I will find a way to navigate that that works for the board.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, any further final thoughts on this topic? Seeing none, we look forward to the discussion next week. Thank you so much. Okay. We are, and like we, like I thought, it would be like a two hour discussion, and we are two hours. We have a couple other board agenda items that we need to discuss. The rest of you are excused, or you can stay on, it's up to you. It's unrelated to this matter completely.
Do you wanna name what they are?
Yeah, I am getting to that. Um, we are going to, uh, get back to that policy discussion quickly so that, um, we can have clear clarity in going up to, uh, in clarity in going up to Dr. X.
So, are there any first?
Yeah, that's what we.
And is there anything else we're doing? We said a couple of other ideas.
Uh, yeah, but I can come to that, the second one. Uh, this is a bigger discussion, the second one is just.
Did I give them?
No.
Okay.
So do you want this pulled up on, on the screen up there?
Um, sure.
If that is possible.
And I don't know if side by side would be possible with what, um, Director Jorgensen had already proposed.
Okay, or maybe, um, pull up, uh, the one that Director Jorgensen proposed, and the other one is in our hand. I don't know if it is side by side as possible. If side by side is possible, then you can, you'll have to open two windows.
I just saw it, just find Dr. Parker Jorgensen's, cause I wasn't expecting. Give me a minute.
Uh, that would be on January third, um, uh, work session on board docs.
Just a clarification.
You just sent it out, though. Just, you sent it out as with the interview version?
In an email?
Um, in an email, just two days ago.
Yeah, it is, but it's, she she may be able to find it on the January third.
But it won't be the most recent version, right?
Doc, this is the most recent.
No, because I did edits that I sent to Jason and he emailed to her, and that's what you emailed out most recently.
No.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, that was my clarification was, this was my draft, Director Nelson's inputs, then was sent.
So I'm going to, um, forward this to you, Melissa, right now. So it'll be on top of your, uh, thing. So I just sent it to you.
All right, should we just take a five-minute recess?
Sure.
Okay. You wanna announce that or?
I know.
Everybody has left and it's just you and me at this time. So we will, if you can pull it up, I just sent it to you.
Are you still in session?
Yes.
We are taking a five-minute break.
Oh, I thought it was.
So we are taking a five-minute break to whoever it is that's watching, and we will rejoin the work session in five minutes to conclude business, which will only take us about ten or fifteen minutes after that. So, uh, essentially, we have, uh, what the board indicated was that we are going to come up with certain guidance that, um, uh, either the policy committee or the point of contact for that policy in the district are going to use as, um, as a guardrail in developing future improvising, um, current policies and also developing future policies. So Director Jorgensen first came up with the board principal document, which is on the left side of the screen. Uh, Director Nelson provided some, um, uh, changes to that, um, uh, document, and then now Director Art on the right has proposed some more changes. So we just need to come to a, uh, agreement consensus on this, so we can incorporate this. The basic idea is that, um, this guidance will be incorporated into policy B G, okay? Um, in language, so it is, um, uh, captured out there for, um, the policy committee and also for the district and the various staff to incorporate it in it, um. With that, uh, the main, uh, bullet points are the ones that, uh, I am more focused on at this time. Uh, the flow of the language and how it fits into policy B G. Doctor X can blend that into the policy B G and bring it in. Uh, but is there anything that you want to fundamentally change in the bullet points itself? Either add new new bullet points or you fundamentally disagree with something that is there in the current bullet points that you want to revise. Uh, that's where we are at at this point in time. Director Art, do you want to, uh, at this point, do you want to, I mean, because that's the left side document that we saw. What are the revisions that you are proposing?
So on the right-hand side, you can see the version I would propose, um, starting, and I, and for the board members, there are notes on the back, for example, regarding the first paragraph, just, policy V G already states that, Mike, to your point, the policy committee can take this and massage it into policy B G. Um, but I I think they have to. But I I think they have to maybe understand that that's within the realm of what they can do and that we're not handing them a complete document. That that wouldn't it to be clear that we have to say this because that's what the board said to put in um but.
Hmm. This is what we're agreeing on, right?
Well, so my question to you would be, do we have to say like in the first paragraph?
Well, that was just for us as a board to look at.
Yeah.
Okay.
That that's not, that's a need to go into policy BG, let them figure it out the flow.
Well, as as well as part of the matching.
Okay, so just yes.
I'm more worried about the bullet points.
Yeah.
Okay.
The bullet points, the board is giving guidance and there should be little or no revision in the bullet points itself.
I agree, whatever we decide the bullet points is what the board decides.
Okay. Okay, um well, in that case, I will address the changes I made first reflecting the district's mission, vision and values. That seemed pretty key and I don't think it is necessarily mentioned in policy BG. So if we're gonna say it has to be this, I think that's pretty clear. And also just in general, the language I'm proposing doesn't say policy should, policy should. It's just board policy should and then these are the 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 bullets. Yes, it should align with the the laws. It should um it the the third bullet point or is it second? The the one about the the names, the specific names and titles that just seemed um excessively long. The third bullet in the new version focusing on supporting students' best academic outcomes. I know you had neutral um environment. To me, we don't want it to be neutral, we want it to be positive. We want them to be, you know, just well, to use some words from this uh application we were looking at for the uh CSST school. You want learning to be joyful, you want it to be positive. So if we say neutral, it just to me, it's kind of a a dead zone, so but that's me. Um we want it to be supportive, engaged. And some of that does come out of our um mission, vision and values statements as well. Taking safety and calling that out separately as a line after kind of taking two of the bullets on your list and breaking them into slightly worded. Slightly different, but still hopefully the same meaning um when it comes to safety. We want policy to protect student data and privacy. The recognize parent and guardian partnership in a student's journey, learning journey. That seems um we want to do that, but I know that comes away a little bit of what you had proposed. But I think that this still can get to the gist of it without um as something we had heard expressed once in a time um creating rights that don't exist right now, that can get us into difficulties. The collaborative culture that promotes intentional mission driven change is right out of our strategic vision. And so is the next one, guarantee equitable practices to meet the unique needs of all students. Again, right out of our strategic um plan. And then the other parts that are down below, that is language slightly rewritten that was in there. Instead of guardrails, they said guidelines, so that's might be nitpicking language. But it's hopefully still gets the gist of what like that last bullet was. And that can be tucked away. If you don't wanna move bullets around, I would say let's not have that bullet. Let's move that down and ask for that to be in the repeal section of the policy.
Which bullet?
Hmm, which one?
The the reduction and elimination of?
Yeah, the reduction elimination one. And my suggestion is at the bottom of the page, rather than adding it as the last bullet. Um maybe we could say policy that is duplicative or may no longer be pertinent should be reviewed by the committee and forwarded to the board for repeals.
That's fine.
I think that's it, I'll have to look at my notes again.
Okay. So um any uh comments or feedback on what Director Art proposed? Director Jorgensen.
For the neutral language, it wasn't in a sense of like attitude, more of I guess I'm thinking of other words, I just clicked on synonyms. Would be unbiased or impartial was the language I was looking for, not to have neutral like a boring classroom, but neutral like im- impartial or or unbiased of.
Fair.
You know, like policy GBEB states, you know, no political things, no ideologies, you know, that kind of clarity.
Mm-hmm.
That's true too, is that another objective?
Objective, yeah, sure, nothing subjective then, right, so.
Was you said GB, what did you say?
GBEB.
This is.
And then GBEBR is the regulations of it. Um so that was maybe more of my language, so um I I don't mind.
I I agree with you, I would like to see.
Shifting from neutral to more of a unbiased or impartial.
In our parent partnership policy, we use objectivity.
Okay.
Provide impartial learning environments free of ideological and political advocacy.
Okay, so impartial and objective maybe are some words I could use.
So either of those, yeah.
Okay, so um just looking, that's the fourth bullet point up there.
Okay.
I'm just trying to capture the will of the board. Uh focus on supporting students' best academic outcomes in a a positive, uh supportive, comma, uh impartial uh uh objective and engaged learning environment. Do you want to add to uh so we have the language from Art and we have the language from Jorgensen too then.
I I. I think supportive and engaged are already gonna be covered in other policies and through our mission, vision and values. I think if you wanted to keep positive for for the benefit of, you know, in a positive, impartial and objective learning environments. I think that would be, you know, concise and still clear.
Okay, what we have now is positive, impartial and what does the third?
Obje- objective learning environments.
Objective learning environments.
Or objective based learning environments, if you wanted that.
No.
What is, objective learning environment.
Objective learning.
So I'm it looks like you combined two bullet points on that, do you, are you guys good with that? Because um.
Which one are you thinking she combined?
One. Actually, I think you did three, you combined three.
So on on the back of the notes, let's see the I pulled safety, there is one on the left, let's see, that is safety.
I'm gonna see in safety to.
Yeah, one, two, three.
Fours, we had um.
The fifth one talks about policy that is pro-student staff safety and structurally focused on best academic outcomes. And I thought, you know, it's safety is kind of its own idea and academic outcomes are another.
Mm-hmm.
So yes, it's.
So then you combined the entire.
I moved that one aside.
The academic outcomes to the other point.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
And kept safety its own, which I like, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Be able to make the changes. I would like to go down to recognize parent guardian.
Well, let let's finish this, let's finish with this, i- are we good with positive? Uh if you can just strike it out, uh yeah, for yeah, impartial and objective. Yeah, is that okay what um Muzolsan has captured out there focusing on supportive students? Book focusing, yeah, focusing on supporting students' best academic outcomes in positive, impartial and objective learning environments.
Yeah, okay.
Do we need, do we need both objective and impartial definitions?
Is it redundant?
Maybe a little.
And and.
I I like both, I think impartial reads one thing and objective reads more.
I like both, okay.
Objective strikes the subjective subjectivity of classrooms and impartial gives us that usual classroom environment.
Okay.
Okay. Are we, are we good with the language that's captured in there right now?
For that bullet point, yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Any other revisions to the right and back to back as you said that you wanted something?
Um I'm comparing the uh number seven, recognize parent guardian partnership in a student's learning journey. I um would like to see a stronger statement.
I agree.
And so um.
So the language for that uh is on uh the second bullet point out there in this uh.
On the original, it's.
Yeah, on the original is this language.
Yeah. Yes.
Second from the bottom, yeah. Yeah.
Um and I don't have a rewording for you, but I would like to capture the importance of parents um.
I like the wording that is in the original that she just highlighted in yellow. Can we just keep that?
And just remove the policy that and just have.
Yeah.
Recognizing and encourage and recognize affirm, those are all great pieces.
Mm-hmm. You know, we were speaking to the idea that some of this is already in policy itself. And in another option might be to just reference people to that parent partnership policy. Or just say parent partnership um.
Well, the uh.
Yeah.
You didn't say that three times real fast.
I am.
My concern with that is, um and it came up early on my time on the board. When hit, when somebody picks up a a policy. I think it's important for us to be able to capture direction for the people who are who are review reviewing that policy. And to say, go see uh another policy.
I'm not gonna do it. Yeah, all the time.
It's cumbersome, it's cumbersome.
Yeah.
Well, uh it's lost sometimes if you're telling, go look at that policy and that policy says, go look at another policy. By the time you go to the down the thing, the message is.
Which which is exactly why hardly any of us ever read state statutes. Um especially when we're interested in finding something particular in education. So I want a strong statement there and uh we can, bless you, uh we can leave what was originally planned, we can. But I, the words I wanna pick out. Um thank you. The words I wanna pick out is affirms authority. Notifying parents, I think those are really important to me. Because and again, before I ran for this office, I would come to board meetings and with the board that was seated at that time. It was said more than once, we have these children just for this part of their lives, their parents have them for the rest of their lives. And they should be, parents should be in the primary position. And I think that those words makes it very clear that this board at this time recognizes the fact that parents are um important to their children's long term uh lifespan and I'll stop there.
Okay, so right now on the left it reads and I'll read it out, policy that encourages parent guardian involvement and affirms their authority over the student's learning journey. In particular notifying parent guardian of any information that pertains to the health, education and well-being of their child.
I agree, I I think that's a really.
So I just take off policy that and say encourage.
Right, we do, we take that policy out, so it'll start with encourages.
Just encourage.
Okay, encourage.
Parent guardian.
So my concern about if this makes it sound like we will always notify parents and guardians of these things. And I worry that we could be sued if we fail to rise up to that and so.
I think past.
We already should be rising up to this.
Oh. That's that may be true, but we are working with humans here and we fail at many things.
Mm-hmm.
Um and also you may be putting us in a bind with our top one. There are things that regard children's health that we do not have to and and we cannot by state law communicate to a parent.
Okay, how about that? Let's capture that language that the majority of the board at this time highlighted in the left. Encourage and the four lines up there, Melissa transferred it out there. And what I would have to do is run it by legal and make sure that legal is good with that language.
Thank you for doing that because it is a conflict as far as.
Okay. Yeah, and if legal comes and words it in a way that legal gives the thumbs up on it, are you good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
Well, there, correct me if I'm wrong, there is a sense in which this is not a policy document or no, it is being added to our policy.
Yeah, it is being added to our policy.
Nevermind, I'm completely wrong.
Okay, so is that okay with you, Director Art? Run it by.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, run it by legal, so instead of us trying to figure out what is okay and what is not okay. Let's run it by legal and make sure that we are going to be okay with that and leave the language as it is right now. But let legal come and propose uh what's a what's an acceptable language, anything else moving on? In that lan- now we are more focused on the document to the right. Anything else that needed to be um added or changed in the document to the right?
On the last bullet point there, do we wanna change the word guarantee to like ensure some?
Uh it it um re- raises the same thing when which Director Art this, when you say guarantee out there, then is somebody going to sue us for it?
Sure.
Right, but sure might be a similar sentiment, but maybe a.
Uh or.
We'll let the lawyers figure out what word.
Yeah, maybe highlight that one for legal also.
Okay.
I mean, we in a way, we commit to it as our with our strategic plan, but I understand exactly what you're saying.
Yeah.
And then two, if I can make one other point, um before we give up, I don't, oh, I can wait though until we're maybe officially done with the front end, but.
Anything else in uh are you changing something else?
I just wanna bring up the last paragraph.
Okay, but let's uh worry about the bullet points itself.
Yes. As existed.
Um. Okay, anything else that you want to um uh change or um reflect out there um? When the second to last bullet point out there cultivate a collaborative culture that promotes intentional miss mission driven change and that's from our strategic plan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um we do not want at the same time to um when decisions are being made at the administrative level that when we put a specific language in there that does that, is that going to?
Yeah, I am uncomfortable with that bullet point.
Which bullet point?
The cultivate a collaborative culture that promotes intentional mission driven change. Like how is that in polit- how is that a principle for people offering policies?
Review the policy too, sure.
I think it's important for things like DAC and SAC and you know, we've already as a priority, we've established community engagement and.
But to me, that's more of like a mission or vision statement, not a principle to guide policy development. Like policy, I was actually think wondering if we should add a bullet that says policies should be principled, period. Like that's what they are, I mean, like when you look at.
Principled and academically merit merited or something like that, have academic merit and and.
But we have so many things that have nothing to do with academics and they're necessary.
Yeah, I would just put they're principled, period.
True.
Like when you look at the Bill of Rights, it's just principles.
True.
And they've lasted a long time. You know, when you keep it so high level, they're gonna be good to go for a long time. When you get too much into the weeds of something details, then that's when you have to go back and change so many times.
I I do not recommend adding that bullet about cultivating.
Is that going to help develop policies um adding that language in there?
I like it, but I don't see it being effective in that question.
Okay.
As you're being.
It's under the board at this time.
So to that point, Director Nelson, is there anything else we could take away from here that still provides, you know?
Right, let's talk about that first.
Well, is is some of that idea Lauren captured in bullet point three, focus on intent and purpose, but avoiding specific names and titles? Could could you alter that to kind of try to capture some of what you're trying to say?
Say focus on principles.
Focus on principles or other than, I I don't know what a good word.
Yeah.
That's right.
Uh focus on intense intent and purpose.
A- and if the first bullet point says reflect the district's mission, vision and values, that's all.
The principles on how to withstand.
Yeah, exactly, but then some of those bullet points in the end are redundant. When it says reflects the district's mission, vision and values, because those are all um captured in that document strategic plan. So we are repeating ourselves again by repeating those statements if they are all captured in that uh mission, vision and values document.
Unless you wanna put reflect uh principles in the district's mission, vision and values, something.
No. No.
Or something similar, govern the district and its principles.
And and what.
I'm trying to figure out how to put it in that bullet that Thomas pointed out, I think it could fit there, I just don't know how to work it out.
I'm also not a hundred percent sure what you what you want, just in the sense that there's policy that can't really avoid being in the weeds to some extent, you know?
Policy.
We reviewed policy on background tracks for transportation. You that that's not a high level consideration, that's a really nitty gritty detail that the district does need a. The district does need a, you know, a procedure for handling.
Yeah. But at the same time, we're supporting students' back safety with that, right? So we, that is absolutely something we wanna do, so just it fits.
Yeah, what yeah, what I'm what I'm saying is you need, we need policies that do get into the weeds and describe those things, so I don't know if it's really.
They need it, right, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm good with not.
Do do we really want, you know, a constraint saying we want these things to stay at a high level, cause sometimes they can't.
So I'm good, yeah, that's true. I'm good with not worrying about adding that word in the answer.
I think what word did I miss?
Principled.
Okay. Okay. So where are we on the la- second to last bullet point? Do we want to keep that in? Or is that captured in that?
Jason and I expressed that we were okay with removing it, so more people need to give an answer, so we can move on.
Okay.
Um cultivate a collaboration?
Yeah.
Well, my concern with that, and we've had this conversation here, is collaboration doesn't necessarily mean agreement. And that causes us an awful lot of stress. We want input, we consider what's coming to us as information. And yet we are the ones who are responsible for the decisions that we make. So I am uncomfortable with that because it seems as though. That the input that we get is what we're supposed to agree to. So. I'm uncomfortable.
Well, I think it's captured in that first bullet point, I think reflects the district's mission, vision and values.
Yeah.
Everything is captured in that strategic plan out there.
Yeah.
That and we are repeating it's ourselves in there by calling this out specifically, unless we want specific attention to that. It's reflected in that first statement that Director Art introduced out there, which is a good statement, I think, reflect the district's mission, vision and values up there, so. Okay, so then let's, yeah, we can eliminate that one. Okay, anything else at this time? Okay, so what I have there is um. Uh change in the fourth bullet point, uh adding impartial and objective there. Uh the whole other bullet point that's added out there is going to go through legal review, all of it will go through legal review. But that bullet point specifically will go through le- legal review. And then the last one to ensure promote whatever it is uh that we are going to add there, incident guarantee. Okay, and we'll get that back.
So at on the back of your page, I just noted there. Would it be possible to allow the policy committee to suggest to us if they had. A mind to do so, that they might suggest any additional bullet points? Um specifically, I had noted um policies that lend clarity to, I don't, you know, better. Academics um or promoting student health or sustainable facilities or resources, giving direction for sound financial management. Um promoting good governance, this was all about us. Um and I I realized, you know, we have come together and we think these look good. But do we wanna leave it open if they might have suggestions as well?
I think that's a reasonable ask, cause the the intention of this is a tool for the policy committee for us to say. Here are our priorities and intentions. When you're crafting policy, please think about these things.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that's a very reasonable ask to say, this is supposed to be a tool for you, what do you think of it? Are there other think guiding principles that you need us to articulate for you, or are there other things that, you know, you need us to clarify? I I think that's a great suggestion.
I guess I I'll just throw out a little bit different perspective, but uh it's. Our guidance to them. Now I'm open to getting feedback, but we are the ones that are saying like.
Mm-hmm.
This is what we want you to take into consideration. It's not just the committee, it's the um what are we calling them?
Point.
We point of contact, the administration folks and um. But yeah, we can get feedback. It's to me, it's um. I'm done.
I just think there's many more of them than us with more divert- more experience in academics and. You know, experience with, you know, the school executives and they, somebody might say, well, I worked at this school district and this was a principle or a guiding. Suggestion that they had for policy and they could bring it back to us and we're gonna be like, or we could say, that is amazing, why didn't you think of that?
Yeah. I just wanna caution us that we don't get like twenty. I wanna keep it tight, you know, so we'll hear what we'll get the feedback, but.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, let's get the feedback like what Director Director Carey said, that's reasonable getting a feedback, but ultimately this is going to be embedded in policy BG. And the board would have to approve policy BG, so you at the uh the board has authority in accepting the language that comes from them or just saying that that. Not we need at this time. You have something else to, is that it?
No, I think I was.
But then just for timing wise, we won't be able to send till to legal until we review what they give us. And then that has to go.
The we will send this language to legal right now, I don't wanna wait in it.
And then we'll send it again.
And if they add additional language, then we will look at that language alone to legal.
Okay.
So let this, this policy BG is going to get adopted by the end of this academic year. We still have this guidance given to the point of contact, I don't know what their timeline is, okay? But they have, even before the policy BG is adopted, this guideline is going to be given to the point of contact, okay? So let me review the process, so there is clarity and Dr. X wasn't present at the board retreat either. So he can look back, he's not present out here, but he can look back at the video of this and then board members. Uh make sure that I'm capturing uh what the board agreed on at the board retreat. Right now, the policy uh process is going to follow two pathways. One is going to be the board initiated pathway and I will talk about the board initiated pathway first. When at the beginning of the year or beginning of a semester, the board will or may identify. Certain specific policies that it wants to address that timeframe in that year or in that um semester. The point of contact to those policies. An administrative person within the district will then be authorized to look at that policy. Put together a panel if necessary of experts that will provide guidance to that point of contact. Including staff members and parents if necessary. And revise the policy based on these policy guidelines that have been put in place. Once that has happened, it will come to the board at a work session. The board will have a discussion about. If it is a specific attendance policy and there are several policies that flow with that attendance policy, look at that whole group of policies. And decide if some of these policies can directly go to non-action and action. Or some of the policies that had extensive mode revision needs to be kicked back to the policy committee for feedback. Okay, and if it goes back to the policy committee for feedback, it comes to the board after that and the board goes through non-action, action and adopt it. And it is recommended that the policy committee also look at the policy with these guidelines that are going to be put in policy BG. The other pathway is going to be for policies that have to be periodically revised. Um maybe it is based on changes in state laws or or uh. Just that we have four hundred plus policies and they have to be touched on and those can be initiated at the policy committee level. They will go through the same process as they do at this time and it'll come to the uh. Including the point of contact for that policy, providing input to the policy committee. And then it'll come to the um uh board at a work session and then non-action, action. Did that capture what we discussed at the board retreat? Adequately, great, so I, yeah, okay, it captures it. The other feedback that the board specifically decided on is from our side. We are going to look at the attendance and discipline policies by the end of this year. Uh we are also going to look at a new policy, uh cell phone policy, which the board um um. First task, Director Carey and because we don't have anything at all for that Director Carey and Director Haley. To uh work with administration and Superintendent Call will provide you an administrative contact and. Uh uh work on an initial draft of that cell phone policy, maybe referring to CASB as if they have anything in. Uh writing out there as far as cell phone goes. Uh attendance, discipline, cell phone, um and then policy BG itself and. Any policy related to committee, uh those are the policies that we will um focus. Board initiated policies that we will focus to approve by uh the end of this academic year, which is May. Okay, some that timeframe is being given to them. The policy committee can still continue to look at the other policies if they want to, but these are the policies that are board initiated. The other guidance that the board provided during that board retreat was. For Dr. X and administration to tighten the committee structure itself, the policy committee structure itself. And uh I think it's policy BDF that talks about that. When that comes in front of the board by the end of this academic year, that it's not like twenty five people on that policy committee, but make it a little bit more tight. Anything that I missed out on?
Uh we also talked about making it more efficient, so at what point like are is the board going to say? Okay, policy committee, just for example, you get one mi- one meeting to review a policy and then it comes to the board. Because what happens is there's not a decision maker in the committee. And so they spend a lot of time talking about things, which is very valuable. I really appreciate the feedback and the input. Uh but sometimes policies sit in committee for months before it gets moved on and so because there's not like. A mechanism to for someone to decide, okay, we're just, we've addressed all the concerns, now we're gonna move on. So I've been thinking through, how do we make this more efficient? Could we um? I don't know, maybe they still vote on it, maybe that there's still value in having the committee members vote on it. But could it rather be they're taking notes of the concerns that are shared or the suggestions that are shared? Once that's all documented, then it comes to the board for review. And so it's not like they are having to agree on the language specifically, but rather each person can share. Their input and then it comes to us to actually be the deciders. Cause otherwise, I I just feel like there's uh, like I said, there's not. A way to sort of move it along.
Okay, so I I, yeah, well, Dr. X is going to listen to this conversation, so he can.
Does that make sense?
Uh listen to exactly what you stated up there and try to incorporate that either into that policy itself. My hope is that now that the board has given clear guidance on the right side out there with these bullet points. That will speed up some of those discussions because they look at what does what do the board want? This is the guidance that they should be looking at the lens from. Um and maybe the point of contact for each policy should also lean in and. Provide specific guidance to the policy committee um based on these guidelines. But your point is noted and Dr. X can listen to this conversation and. The basic takeaway is make the process more efficient, okay?
Can I just address some of that too, though? If let's say we're the policy committee and a point of contact brings us a policy and we discuss it. And Director Carey has some great ideas on a rewrite and we're all in agreement, what you've just suggested is it still goes to the board. And I'm guessing that's not maybe what you intended, but to me, if he has some good suggestions for a rewrite and. Dr. Vankis says, and we have this additional thing consideration that you may have left out. That needs to go back to the point of contact to rework maybe just a little bit and then come back for that. Thumbs up from the committee before it would come to us. I I guess to me, they. Their input should be considered and incorporated as best as possible.
Yeah, definitely. Sometimes they reach a standstill.
And then. I understand and at that point, it should be the person who is. The moderator, if you will, the facilitator for that committee to have some authority to move things along. And it so I think that is something Dr. X might consider is, you know, helping people reach that consensus that. If they don't come to some agreement, it it just needs to come to the board and then yes, we kick it back or not.
And that's where I'm at, if they can't, if they're at a standstill, we're the ones who approve it. So send us what you have, send us your input and we'll make the decision.
Good, good. We had a healthy, robust conversation on this, so I think Dr. X says enough input, we have captured the guidelines in that document. I think we are good to go on this. Uh once that language is finalized, I will just share it with the board. Based on the feedback that comes from legal counsel, that's all I mean, I'm not going to change any other language as it is on the right unless legal asks me to change it, okay? Great, and that's the guidance that which the policy committee and. Uh the point of contact is going to work with until this. Uh language is going to be incorporated into policy BG and officially adopted by the board and that could be two months down the road. But still, in the meantime, they're going to look at this as the guidance document uh and go with it. Good enough, okay, last thing that I do want to quickly touch the board on was that lobbyist situation that we talked about last week. And I just wanted to make sure that considering the time constraint that we are in and we don't have a lobbyist at this point in time. The sole source contract for the rest of this um uh academic year, the rest of this legislative session.
Legislature.
Okay, the rest of this leg- which is kind of the same as the academic year, I guess, till May, June. The board is comfortable with that and we can pursue and get a sole source contract with a qualified, capable lobbyist who's got experience in this area. And contracts and procurement can go through that process and bring somebody to the board.
Have we all agreed that we are going to um modify our intent with a lobbyist and to the point where we will um. Take a position and have our lobbyists present our position uh at the legislature? I I don't know if we've just.
Which is what we discussed at the previous uh board meeting and which resulted in our lobbyist, current lobbyist deciding that.
If we decide.
They don't align with that, so I am.
Thank you, I just wanted to restate it.
No, I am comfortable with that because. That's why we put that legislative agenda together, that one page document. As long as it aligns with that legislative agenda that the board has put together, then we certainly want. The lobbyist to do their job, which is lobbying, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Not just provide information to us, which is what it's been, and if they want to just provide information to us. We can gather that information by ourselves through other sources.
Mm-hmm.
So I am comfortable with that unless the board says something otherwise.
I'm good.
Okay, are we good with that?
My only question would be now that the legislative session has already started, do do we have confidence that we're going to find someone who's good?
That's up to the contracts department and figure it out, you know, let them figure it out. If it comes to us that we cannot find anybody, then we are kind of.
There's no shortage and there's no shortage of qualified people.
So to that point, I would just, I would rather not have anyone than have someone who doesn't represent us well, so.
The idea will be that legislative agenda that is out there, that they align with that, okay? That support adopted legislative agenda.
That is. Mm-hmm. And that's fine, but that doesn't mean they'll represent us well, so you know, references checked and solid.
Right. Yeah, yeah.
Experience.
Yeah, but we just have to get that confirmation that they do align with it. The agenda and we'll reference whoever it is to the discussion that took place even at the work session, so.
Yeah.
They have an idea where the board lines up on certain issues and it's clearly spelled out in that legislative. They have an idea where the board lines up on certain issues and it's clearly spelled out in that legislative agenda. If they are not comfortable lining up with that, then we are not going to be uh.
They would rise to the top and be the choice.
Okay, that's all I had. Okay, is there anything else the board wants to discuss?
Just in the future, so both the policy, the principles and the lobbyists were things that could have been listed on our agenda instead of just being accepted on the other. It would have been more, it would have been better preparation, I think, for us as well.
Mm-hmm. Well, the. The. I gave as much time as possible to the board to let them know about it. I certainly didn't think the uh policy discussion was going to take place forty five minutes.
I understand, but also the public. So you you let us know about the policy principles and I appreciate that. Um the public, it would have been good for public just consumption to be out there. Um and the lobbyists, I wasn't aware that we were gonna be discussing, not that anything would have changed, but just that openness to our public.
All of board work sessions are open to the public and just because they come to a work session doesn't mean that they get the comment at the work session.
I understand. That's not what I'm saying.
No.
She she's just saying it wasn't on the agenda, that's.
Yeah, that's that's all.
That's fine, but they uh my point to that is that they are welcome to come to a work session, they can always go back and look at the recording that is there.
This is the point, point was advanced notice.
Okay.
Yeah, and and people wouldn't necessarily look if they were interested in policy, they and they saw Innovation School, they're not necessarily going to come look. That's it, yeah, I appreciate your understanding.
And yeah, and it's and we're done with it.
Well, then then the board got to.
We're done with it.
No, the board got to decide that we don't put other as an uh legislative agenda item, other as an item at all. Because some of these things come in the last minute.
I understand, these do not.
Okay, and we don't have twenty four hour notice, so we got to decide then that we take out other and we only talk about the items that are listed on the agenda and nothing more. If that's the board's wish, then we can go in that direction, but right now we have others.
I think she's respectfully asking that in the future, if it's possible to have more notice, it will be appreciated. We understand there will be times it's not possible.
Great, the point is taken. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Since there is nothing else on the agenda, I'm not going to open up any other. With that, the uh board work session is officially adjourned at six fifty five P M.